I call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, August 20th. It is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Prather, Ms. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a corn present.
All right, our invocation tonight will be given by Executive Pastor Taylor Christensen of the Cypress Creek Church.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a privilege to be here. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you for our city. I thank you for our mayor and our council, for our city manager and city staff, God. I just pray that you would bless them tonight amidst a full docket and session before them, God. I pray you'd bless the planning and the preparation and the presentations this evening. I pray you'd give them wisdom and discernment, and we just lift up our city to you, Father. We thank you for the many facets of our wonderful city. We know that you are in the works in all aspects of our city. You see the hard and the dark parts of our city. You see the light and the celebrations, Father. I think of this season being an exciting season for many, being back to school. Everyone from pre-K and kindergarten all the way up to college students to Texas State, Father, I just pray a special blessing over them as they kick off their school year, Lord, and just as a city that we'd be able to support them and guide them as they have, whether it's a permanent or temporary stay here in our city and our town, Father. We just thank you for the many ways that you are a light in this world amidst such brokenness that we experience day in and day out. I pray that we'd lean on to you. I pray you'd bless us, and I pray all this in your name. Amen.
Thank you. Next, we'll have our pledges of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Next on our program is citizen comment. City council hears citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Persons wishing to speak, if you wish to speak, there is a sign-up process which is online and/or you can do it here in the chambers before 5:45. If you request to speak online, you will get a call-in number and/or a link. You may speak once during citizen comment time period. It may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, which we don't have any tonight, you'll have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. You'll start in green, and when the timer shows yellow, you'll have less than 20 seconds left, and when the timer is red, you're timed to speak up, and maybe a bell will ring. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel, and at that time, I will ask you to leave the chambers. This is your warning. It won't be one time, and you get to keep speaking, and we wait for a second. This is your warning. Our first speaker who signed up is Benjamin Ruby, who I believe is joining us online.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is Ben Ruby. I'm with Kim Lee Horn. I am the lead engineer for the access development. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. My intent is to share relevant facts in response to three topics considered during the August 6th council meeting. One is Energy Parkway could be constructed to a lower standard and cost in Caldwell County. We choose to construct the roadway and associated improvements to a higher City of San Marcos standard within this right-of-way once annexed to the city. Our traffic impact analysis coordinated with and reviewed by city and Techstaff concludes that any Energy Parkway provides traffic relief for the Highway 80 corridor, specifically the intersection of 1984. Energy Parkway's proposed alignment is consistent with the city's adopted master thoroughfare plan and directly aligns with existing right-of-way dedicated to Caldwell County on the east side of 1984. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. I remain available through the meeting to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Our next speakers in this order will be Mary Beth Harper, Noah Brock, Annie Donovan, and Rodrigo Amaya. Mary Beth Harper.
I'm Mary Beth Harper. I'm an eleven in Martinville ATJ. I've been against this smart terminal access logistics park since it first started back in 2015. There are too many environmental problems with this whole 2,000-acre project, which is entirely in Caldwell County. Traffic impact, average daily traffic count, the first two numbers are from Tech dot. FM 1984 currently has 2380 cars per day. Highway 80 has 17,402 cars per day. Okay, now, this is estimated from the project manager of Kim Lee Horn. He said this truck route has 25,000 cars estimated, 25,000 trucks. Okay, the crash rate on Highway 80, okay, this is two times the average, more than the statewide average crash rate, and this is for the section from Highway 21 to 1984. And that number comes from the Caldwell County Transportation Plan and Campo. Y'all are familiar with Campo. Okay, 1984 is not built for heavy truck traffic. Currently, there is daily commuter traffic, school buses, and farmers moving their equipment along FM 1984. And add 10,000 to 15,000 trucks on there, that's an accident waiting to happen, especially at the intersection with Highway 80. I found a map from a 2023 press release from the developer of access logistics park. The truck route between Loop 110 and FM 1984 is marked, and it's much, much further north. It follows the easement of, there's a water line and also electric line out there, and that road route follows that easement. And the intersection with 1984 is much further north. It's not across from anybody's house. I'm for the annexation of this ETJ land into the city only if this intersection is moved further north. This road would be built to higher San Marcos standards than Caldwell County standards. Okay, if you vote to approve the annexation, you'll be losing your ability to renegotiate the location of this truck route. And again, the whole thing needs to be scrapped.
Our next speaker is Noah Brock.
Good evening, council. My name is Noah Brock, and I'm here to talk about ordinance 2024-27 and AN 2403, as well as the related executive session item. This is a clear example of the city of San Marcos allowing a developer to do what they want. Please step in and regain some control. Since May 23rd of this year, we have been asking repeatedly why the roadway alignment changed and who made that decision. We received incomplete answers and nothing definitive. We have access to the majority of the records over the past year, and there is no evidence of any type of discussion related to moving the roadway. On August 16th, last Friday, we received the following statement from Joe Pantaleon. Having spoken to key staff working on this project, it appears the city gave no direction to the project's engineer on the alignment. This makes it sound like the developer changed the alignment, and either the city didn't notice or the city didn't care. Based on the statements that the majority of you made last council meeting, you do care about the alignment of this road. The developer also stated that they changed the alignment because it matches directly with the roadway easement in Caldwell County. This statement was not true at the time of annexation application. That easement was still aligned with the original plans, since it was actually the developer that petitioned Caldwell County to move that alignment at a later date. I have emailed and handed out maps that show this alignment in more detail. I have also included a map on the back taken from the Campo arterial plan that shows the roadway alignment closer to the original. In the original alignment, the roadway starts at FM 110, travels outside of city limits and back into city limits before it hits FM 1984. It then crosses FM 1984 and continues in city limits. In the new alignment, the roadway starts at FM 110, travels out of city limits before it hits FM 1984, and then crosses FM 1984 and travels outside of the development agreement. Even if this small portion in question is annexed now, the next segment will remain outside of your jurisdiction. This is guaranteed future development outside of the development agreement. Which of these alignments sound better to you? The mayor pointed out that if the road is built outside of city limits, it will have to be brought up to city standards when it's annexed. This would be true for that long stretch that's blue on those maps in the new alignment. All additional protections outlined on Slide 8 of the presentation that you will see in a little bit would not apply. By the way, it's 90% impervious cover per plat in the development agreement and 70% overall, which does not count roads. If the developer wishes to build that seven-acre portion of the road in the county, they will have to plat the entire project first. Do you want the developer to dictate where the future road is? Vote no, so you can align the road away from residents and back into your jurisdiction. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Donovan.
Hello, council. My name is Annie Donovan, and I wanted to discuss ordinance 2024-27 and AN 2403, which is item one under the consent agenda tonight. Before I do that, however, I wanted to address a comment that was made at the 3:00 PM meeting about Caldwell County maintaining the road if it's built in the ETJ. We have all seen the email where Caldwell states that the proposed road does not comply with the county's road standards, but this does not mean that the county and city cannot create a memorandum of understanding that the city will maintain the road. This is completely within your capability as city council to create these agreements, and I hope you remember that this is always an option. Regarding the road annexation, I have handed out an email from Kim Lee Horn that states the traffic impact analysis they conducted, which, by the way, the public has yet to see, anticipates an average daily traffic of 25,000 on their proposed Energy Parkway alone. According to the 2023 Tech dot actual traffic numbers, 80 currently has an estimated 17,402 vehicles per day, and 1984 only has about 2,380. In the last council meeting, you discussed how putting this road here will remove traffic from the 80-1984 intersection, effectively making it less dangerous, but based on the information from this email and Tech dot, adding this road is going to put more vehicles onto the roads, even more than 80 currently has. It baffles me that some of you believe adding 25,000 more vehicles onto the road will make the 1984 and 80 intersections safer. I want to remind you that the vehicle weight limit of 1984 is 58,420 pounds, but a fully loaded semi is 80,000. Let's say that this road only adds 12,500 cars onto 1984 because the other half follows the internal signage. That's still going to put more than six times the number of vehicles onto this road. One of your main concerns is the ability of Caldwell County to maintain roads. Another was how annexing a road originally built to county standards is going to cost the city more money in the future. So tell us, what's going to happen when you annex 1984? A road not built to city standards but may be expected to handle tens of thousands of cars over its limit. This is going to make it even more expensive, right? If you're trying to save the city money, you have to really look at this strategically. Does this really benefit the city? All the signs are pointing to no. You, as council, have the authority to require the road be put back in its original location and make this a better and safer project. Right now, today, is your chance to correct for past mistakes. Don't continue to sit there and ignore the facts and the objections from your community. Don't let your decision today turn into regret later like previous council members that voted on this in the past. Make the right decision and vote no.
Next is Maxfield Baker, I believe, joining us online. Following him will be Wayne Miller, Sam Benavides, and Sloane Rucker.
Yes, I'm Maxfield Baker. I'm gonna move out of the way so you can see the flyer for just a second. I am here today with the San Marcos Civics Club to talk about an event we have coming up. As per usual, our meetings are the fourth Monday of the month at Tantra Coffee House at 6:30 PM, where we get together and talk about local issues of access and transparency to our local government. In those conversations, the members decided that we should give a real voice and space to people that feel like they have reasons not to vote. There's a lot of them. Some of them are being talked about in this current city council meeting, the lack of trust in city council and staff even, to carry forward the wishes of the community and really hear us out and make some consensus instead of counting to four votes and then making a decision that way. There's also the concerns we've heard in our community about police justice and the lack thereof as it relates to Malachi Williams. We have concerns that decisions are made behind closed doors, and that the campaign promises that many of you all made while running for office aren't really being kept, and that there's not much accountability to that. So our meeting, rather, our event, is going to be on September 27th. I'll kind of scoot out of the way. We're gonna have one of my absolute favorite bands, Piñata Protest, out of San Antonio to come and play for us. They're a norteño punk band. They're absolutely amazing. Check them out on Spotify. We're asking for a $10 suggested donation. We are still going to register voters, but we do recognize that we can't just keep gaslighting people into saying that voting is gonna solve all their problems, because many of you were voted and elected, and it didn't solve our problems. We have not garnered any more trust in the community of our local government or our city staff. We have yet to actually have productive conversations about what real consensus looks like. I mean, as a former council member, I really feel that that's the case. You know, there were times where I would have a good idea, but I saw that y'all counted to four, and that's where we ended up. So this event is really to give a voice and a space to people that have frustrations. We're gonna be making protest signs and have like a little arts and crafts booth for that. We're also gonna be voting on the worst issues in San Marcos, which we plan to turn around and deliver to the city council in some meaningful way. And we really hope that everyone comes out to join us for our meeting. Again, is going to be the fourth Monday of this month is August 26th. We'll be at Tantra, and we really hope that everyone plans to attend our event. Come check us out and check out the resources online. Here, there's a QR code at the bottom. If y'all are able to scan that, that'll take you to the Civics Club Linktree, where we've been creating community resources to help people better understand how unnecessarily complicated our city government is, and we're working to kind of untangle some of that mess. Thank y'all very much.
Rodrigo Amaya.
Good evening. I'm Wayne Miller. So the grand jury has convened, and they exonerated him. And so we think this is over, or maybe you do. I know it's not over. You know, when somebody testifies for a jury, his statement is asked, "Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will make a true and understandable interpretation of the witnesses and that you will accurately interpret them?" Another one says, "I swear by Almighty God that I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth." That's what the people that have come up here and spoken before me, each one of them has something that's important to them. But I heard the same thing, the truth. As a matter of fact, this gentleman right here said, "They said this, but this is not true." I want to ask, have you fact-checked anything that Chief Standrich has said? And if you have fact-checked him, you know that his own words go against him. But I believe that it is your responsibility to check and see if things that are being said are true or not. And then if it's not true, then you make, you take the proper action. You see, I can tell you of a certainty that there are some very good cops working for San Marcos Police Department, and there are some awful ones working for San Marcos Police Department. I can tell you with a certainty that last month, there was an individual that was misidentified, and they went into this person's place of a boat, and they beat him, and they cuffed him, and they threw him in jail. They didn't check to see if they had the right person? So I'm asking you, do you think that I believe that when they went after Malachi, they had the right person? My time is about to be continued.
Our next speaker is Sam Benavides.
Good evening, council. My name is Sam Benavides, and tonight, there are various concerns I want to address regarding the police killing of Malachi Williams and the lack of transparency in the city's response. First of all, I want to talk about why so many advocates consider the grand jury process one of the most secretive and unaccountable processes within the legal system. For those who don't know, a grand jury proceeding is the hearing in which a group of individuals is presented evidence of a potential crime behind closed doors and determines whether there is enough evidence to move forward with a criminal case. Last Wednesday, a Hayes County jury, grand jury determined there wasn't enough evidence to move forward with a criminal case against any officer in the killing of Malachi Williams, including Elsie de Sventura, who fired the shots and is the only officer to have been named publicly. Because of the secretive nature of the grand jury process, we may never know what charges were considered, what evidence was shown, and what evidence was not shown. For reference, in the 2020 killing of Jennifer Miller, we learned that despite Lockhart PD recommending charges of criminally negligent homicide, the DA presented it as distracted driving. We only learned that because he slipped up and admitted it during an interview at KXAN, and it comes as no surprise to us that he decided to never do a media interview regarding that case again. I know that the grand jury process is a county proceeding and not a city proceeding, but I wanted to address this here as food for thought in hopes that it will make you think about the ways your officers are protected from facing accountability for the wrongdoing at every step of the way, from internal discipline all the way through legal proceedings. The second issue I want to address is the way the city is handling the release of the footage from the night Malachi was killed. Immediately after learning Elsie de Sventura was cleared by the grand jury last Wednesday, I immediately submitted an open records request for the body camera footage from all officers present at the time of the shooting. Yesterday, SMPD responded, asking me to name the officers whose footage I am seeking. How am I supposed to know that? How am I supposed to know that when the only name that has been released is Elsie de Sventura? State statute doesn't even require that I list the name of the officer when requesting body cam footage, so why am I being asked to present information that has not been made public? Standard was clear about there being four officers present at the time of the shooting. It should be obvious which officers I am seeking footage from. I believe this is an effort to stall or sabotage the release of this footage and does not display the standard of transparency that this police department claims to uphold. With that, I once again ask that you release all the footage from that night, including the convenience store footage and the moments after Malachi was shot, and prove that the officers prioritize medical aid first and foremost as required by state law. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sloane Rucker, and afterwards will be Ayman Ashan, Yancy Arvalo, Mike Camerlander, and Emilia Hurtado. Sloane Rucker.
Yes. Hello, my name is Sloane Rucker. I've been a resident here for over two years now. I'm here today to speak on the wrongful murder of Malachi Williams. When I first heard the news, my heart sunk, and I've been following this investigation up until the recent disappointing verdict that cleared the officer who killed Malachi of blame and the release of the edited footage. I watched the footage published by San Antonio Express, a news outlet with over 112,000 followers which covered the story. It made me sick to my stomach to see what appeared as an avoidable and reckless murder, and judging by the comments, a majority of people agree that this murder was wrong and that the officer mishandled the situation. I can't even imagine the hurt suffered by Malachi's family since they had their loved one taken from them in such an unjust way. A grave injustice occurred in the city, and I refuse to idly sit by while the city's departments brush this off as an acceptable use of force. I know that what I saw was not the full footage, and so I demand for transparency, the release of the entire footage, including the continuous corner store footage and body cam footage of the incidents involving the shooting of Malachi by a member of this city's police force. Only with the footage will be clear whether the officers complied by state law to provide medical aid before taking fatal measures. This council could be instrumental in ensuring that there is justice delivered, but so far I've not seen you all do so. A city that doesn't provide oversight into its police department is a corrupt one. Please, for the sake of justice, intervene and join us in our call for the release of the full footage. Not intervening sends the message that in San Marcos, not all lives are treated equally. Do the right thing. Transparency and accountability are the cornerstones of a just and equitable city, and it's crucial that our elected officials uphold these principles in the aftermath of such an egregious tragedy. Releasing the complete footage is a matter of public interest, but also what I believe to be a citizen's right to understand the context surrounding this use of fatal force. Withholding the full footage undermines public trust, fuels speculation, and lends to a further sense of injustice. The people of San Marcos have a right to witness the truth and to ensure that our police are held to the highest standards of conduct. I urge the city council to call on the release of the full footage. The community's trust and the integrity of our city's justice system depend on it. And while I still have some more time, I'm gonna say that, you know, I think it's really telling that you guys haven't had any meetings with the folks trying to call for a ceasefire resolution. I'm sure you remember me all from that. I don't know, you guys say that's not a local issue, but then we come up with local issues such as police misconduct, and y'all don't care about that either. So I'm just kind of getting the sense that there's an apathy from our elected officials. And we have an election coming up, and a lot of young people are really upset with the current mayor, the current council members. So I would just say, you know, like, in order to do your jobs, in order to be reelected, you guys need to start listening to us, and not just, you know, pretending like you're listening, but actually hear us out. Because every time I'm here, I just feel like I'm not being heard, and that's not right. So, and some justice for Malachi Williams and freedom in Palestine. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ayman Ashan. Yancy Arvalo.
Hello, my name is Yancy Arvalo. I don't know, I'm kind of nervous to talk right now. It's just astounding how we just keep, I keep coming up here to talk about the same issues, and, you know, this council is not taking any active steps to even try to fix anything that's going on. I came here prepared with a speech that I had written, but at this point, it's like, what else can we say to make you do something about the genocide that's happening in Palestine? We know that the US government is assisting the Israeli government in committing genocide. The ICJ ruled it. It's international ruling, like, we know they're guilty, yet our government is still participating and sending money. The same day that one of the schools had been bombed in Palestine, they were praying, and they got bombed. Survivors were given bags of body parts, not knowing if that was their loved one or not. So imagine if this city council meeting had gotten bombed while they were praying earlier. How does that make you feel? It's just so frustrating, and it's so upsetting that our city is not doing anything. Jane, you're not doing anything. You kicked me out of the last meeting, taking a stance on decorum because I said something you didn't like, but yet you won't take a stance on genocide? Buck up! Make it make sense! If you really want to get reelected this coming election, you gotta do something. Yeah, you're looking at me like that, but it's the truth, and we all know it. Yeah, you're looking at me like that, but it's the truth, and we all know it. I just keep thinking about this video I saw of a Palestinian imprisoned man being raped, and Israeli settlers being so outraged that these iOS soldiers were facing consequences. They were mad that they were facing consequences for rape. What is that? Just do something.
Our next speaker is Mike Camerlander.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Camerlander. I'm the president of Greater San Marcos Partnership, which is the regional economic development organization for Hayes and Caldwell Counties, as well as for the city of San Marcos. I'm here to speak about Resolution 2024-27, which is regarding the Access Logistics Park Road Annexation. GSMP is in support of this resolution. It's the best option to achieve the goals of the project. By annexing the road, access developers would be required to construct the street to city standards, which is higher than county standards, taking into account many more improvements for drainage and other things that are required, as well as weight and traffic count. Traffic, the traffic count stated by Kelly Horn is at full development, which is years and years and years down the road when more improvements would be made, as well as FM 110, which this intersects, was built to promote growth in this corridor. So, there should be responsible development in San Marcos. We absolutely agree with that. Access developers agree with that too, which is why they spent time with city staff and with the city, working on this road and the entire project to make it work well with what San Marcos deserves. What San Marcos also deserves is great jobs for its citizens, investment in the community from a property tax standpoint, that will actually lower property taxes in the long run, not raise them. So, we are in favor of this. Annexing the road is a great step towards achieving these goals for San Marcos and its citizens, and would urge you to please vote yes on the annexation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Emilia Hurtado, to be followed by Ezekiel Enriquez, Karen Munoz, and Chuck Duncan.
I've been a citizen in San Marcos for over five years now.
Would you state your name first?
My name is Emilia Hurtado. I've been a citizen here for over five years now. I'm here really with my heart on my throat. Clearly, there's a lot of people here, not only the people that are here for Malachi or Palestine, but everyone else here keeps asking for accountability and transparency and for something to be done. And the least you could do is release the full footage and the CCTV of the gas station. You should let the family see the last moments of Malachi. They were not even allowed to know that their son was gone until two days, I believe, two days after. I've been a witness to police mishandling mental crisis. I've been a witness to police lying to me and my friends while we were in traffic situations and in car crashes. So, really, release the footage. It's the least you could do. I'm not here to say anything else. There's a lot of people here that want accountability. Accountability and transparency, and that's the words of the evening.
Our next speaker is Ezekiel Enriquez.
My name is Ezekiel Enriquez. I'm born and raised in San Marcos, born on Camacho Street and raised on Railroad, Ranall Street by the river, by Rio Vista. So I'm very close to the river because we were right there, right next to the river. Anyway, I have some complaints. First, you tore down their house on Railroad Street, and then code enforcement, they kept running them off their own property, private property, belonged to them, it still belongs to them. Code enforcement, they kept running them off their property. Then they made them take out, take out, take off their RV that they put in there, they had to remove their RV. You can, you can drive all around San Marcos, and you can see RVs everywhere in people's yards. Why doesn't code enforcement make them move their RVs out? For decades, the federal government has been allocating billions of dollars to San Marcos to help the poor people. Why hasn't the city used this money to pay their taxes so they wouldn't have to move out and lose their properties and their houses? The federal government has been sending billions of dollars to the poor citizens of San Marcos, but I have not heard of a single resident receiving any money. Maybe the city will renovate a house here and there just to cover, cover up that they are, some of the money's going to the poor. Then, they would take the people's, they'll take the people's properties, resell it to rich investors, they build their houses, and then they rent it out to mainly white kids. These are, these are multi-family housing area, and they should be occupied by residential, by residential, by single-family residential, zoning is for single-family residential. But they should, anyway, I have too many complaints. The 4th of July, they closed Citi, you closed a lot of streets. The Elephantiers, you all destroyed them. I'm asking for all of your resignations, all of your resignations, starting from the mayor, city manager, all the department heads. Resign so we can get some better people in there.
Our next speaker is Karen Munoz.
Good afternoon, my name's Karen Munoz. I'm here again to urge for justice for Malachi Williams, and I felt it was important to come today specifically to help clear the record about what Chief Stanridge said at the press conference on Friday. First, Sam's exactly right. I'm an attorney, and defense attorneys generally can't attend grand jury proceedings. I don't know if a lot of people know that. I didn't know that until I went to law school. The grand jury process entirely is led by the prosecution, so clearly that means it's one side, right? And the only, only the officer's point of view is considered, really, when the prosecution is the one who's presenting evidence. I've said before, I've said this before up here, but police reports are hearsay, so that means they're generally not accepted in criminal trials, even unless like there's another reason why, right? So, I say that, like, it's generally true that, like, oh, the grand jury let this person go, like, well, it's an entirely biased proceeding, right? So I just hope you guys remember that. So Stan started the press conference on Friday by expressing his condolences for the family, which is really laughable, considering how he's actually treated the family. What he didn't clearly say is that the family was given access to the video, a link to the videos, about 30 minutes before the press conference, leaving them only 30 minutes to grieve, to watch the videos before they were released to the public. Regardless of Chief's public-facing condolences or pretend condolences, the way that he's actually treated the family shows anything but compassion or anything that looks anything like compassion. He said during the press conference that he would be meeting with Pastor Wayne, Malachi's grandfather, afterwards. What only those of us who were at the police station during the press conference know is that Stan did not meet with Mr. Wayne. He instead sent another one of his officers outside to talk to Mr. Wayne, who told him that he could talk to Chief in his office. Mr. Wayne asked Chief to meet him outside the police station and said, "And I don't think I should have to explain why a private meeting inside the police chief's office in the police station with only the two of them present would be more than uncomfortable for Mr. Wayne." It's pretty common sense that the grandfather of Malachi Williams, who would feel deeply distressed at the prospect of meeting in private with the chief law enforcement officer of this county, right? Of this city, sorry. Still, I'm sure that Chief sent you all an email immediately after this happened and painted Mr. Wayne as the problem, as the problem. That seems to be his MO. I'm probably going to get an email from him right after this, right? He's going to email you guys and say, hey, Karen's wrong. Okay. So a reporter asked if there was any reason that the public was not shown what happened right after the shooting. Stan responded with, well, it's sensitivity to the family and the citizens. So again, instead, we're left with no proof that medical aid was actually rendered, and to pretend that this is about sensitivity to the family when Chief couldn't even wait a couple weeks to meet with the family before hosting a press conference is inconsistent at best and at worst, just so deeply shameful. To pretend that this is about sensitivity to the community and the citizens is, again, minimum inconsistent and at worst, deeply shameful, because this officer shot into a parking lot in the HEB, and Chief himself said, hey, there were 10 cars around, at least 10 people, but the officer shot a gun, and we're supposed to think that this is about sensitivity to the community? Like, please, we already saw people be shot by our police in our community. So, yeah, again, I just ask that you do everything you can to rectify this. The police chief has done such a much harm to this community, and I'm not really sure how you guys are going to fix it.
Our next speaker is Chuck Duncan.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Chuck Duncan, Director of Business Development for Veolia North America. I'll make this quick, there's, I know that y'all have a lot going on tonight, just wanted to come out here and introduce myself and our company. We specialize in wastewater and energy services, and your Jacobs contract to run the wastewater treatment plant and corresponding system is going to expire on its 20-year term next year. So, just wanted to notify everybody that we are interested in competing for your business, and we stand ready when the RFP comes out. Thank you.
Circling back to see if Rodrigo Amaya has arrived. Or Ayman Ashan? Okay, with that, we will close our citizen comment period, and it is now time to look at the consent agenda, the following ordinances, resolutions.
We have Ayman here.
Oh, here. Oh, okay, come on in. Thanks for letting me know.
Do I just start?
State your name, and y'all have three minutes.
Okay, perfect, thank you. My name is Ayman Hassan Hafiz. Council members, I'm here to demand justice for Malachi Williams' family, as many of the other citizens in our community have. A lot of us have lost faith in our federal governments, all of us know that, I mean, not all of us know, but a lot of us know that the president's not going to do anything for each of us here. But everyone that's in this room here right now is here because they believe that y'all have the power to do something for us, to do something for the families that are in need of y'all's assistance. And y'all are all here by the power of the people and for the people, don't forget that. We're the ones that decide whether you get to run next year or not. And so if you want to have this seat next year, this comfy cushions and this AC, remember that Malachi Williams' bereaved family has not fully received any of their original demands in, in the way that they was originally stated, with the proper compassion that they were supposed to receive it with. The city of San Marcos has failed that family, and by extension, me, and by extension, the rest of the people of San Marcos. Once again, I demand that Malachi Williams' family receive all of their demands properly. Thank you.
Okay, and now we will go on to our consent agenda. Following ordinances, resolutions, or other items may be acted upon by one motion. That's Items 1 through 19. No separate discussion is necessary unless it's asked for by a council member, in which case, we will pull that item for more discussion. Counsel, I am going to pull 1, 5, and 12. Is there anything that anyone, yes ma'am?
6, you said 12 and 16.
6 and 16?
Yes, ma'am, if you got 12, yes, ma'am.
Got it.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items 1 through 19 with the pulling of Items 1, 5, 6, 12, and 16.
Okay, looking for a second. Seconded by Mr. Scott.
That was 1, 6.
Yeah, 1, 5.
I thought you said 1, 5, 6.
No, I said I wanted to pull 6 and 16.
Yeah, 1, 5, 6, 12 and 16.
With the exception of...
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Going easier than the way we usually do.
Playing games with me.
Ms. Trevino. Oh, we're push-button voting.
It's not flashing it.
I'm pushing a button.
It's not flashing.
There's still, mine's still flashing.
Mine is not flashing at all.
Okay, maybe we'll do a voice vote for this one.
All right. Mr. Ray.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Okay, Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzales.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Okay, and usually, well, always, we will wait until after the public hearing to address these, but we have no public hearings this evening, so we will go to the pulled items starting with Item 1.
Consider pull of ordinance 2024-27, the second of two readings, annexing into the city approximately 7.53 acres of land, inclusive of a portion of county right-of-way in Caldwell County, Texas, generally located in the western side of FM 1984, approximately 4,600 feet northeast of the intersection between State Highway 80 and FM 1984, and approximately 150 feet northeast of the intersection between FM 1984 and Foster Boulevard. Case number AN-24-03, access logistics, including procedural provisions and providing effective date. Sorry.
Okay. Ms. Hernandez, you have things to enlighten us on?
Yes, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I handed out some of the comments that we received over the last couple of days, and just wanted to make sure you had printed copies of those. I think some of them came to you in an email, if not, you have them all. In the presentation, in the packet, additional slides were included to provide additional detail following up on the council's discussion from the last meeting, and I'm going to focus this presentation on those slides, but if we have questions on slides from last meeting, I am here. So if we can skip ahead two slides, please, to the first red header. At the last meeting, a member of the public provided a document to city council, and the document was a draft preliminary plat, and it was submitted as an exhibit to the watershed protection plan permit that we have in process. Since the plat is not currently under review as a plat, we did not include that in the packet because the layout of those lots is subject to change at any time when they come in with that actual plat application. So what we provided instead is what you'll see on the screen here to provide some more of that context for this annexation. There was a question asked when we were looking at that exhibit, where this larger property for the access development touches State Highway 80. It's a little hard to see on the screen, but in your packet, it is page 45. You can see that the development has frontage on Highway 80 in three locations. We don't know at this time where there might be access requested for a driveway, but know that any driveways that are requested would have to go through text dot on Highway 80 as well as FM 110. And on 1984, the county would be the jurisdiction, except for any portions that might be owned by the city. If the road is owned by the city, maintained by the city, then we are the ones who approve those driveway requests. So that was kind of an off-topic from the annexation specifically, but wanted to point that out to city council. What this exhibit also shows is that the proposed roadway is completely within the development agreement boundaries, and it is connecting FM 110 to 1984. Next slide. We updated this exhibit slightly to clarify that the proposed annexation is for about one-half of a mile of a one-and-a-quarter-mile road. The right-of-way for the road is what's proposed for annexation, and the width is approximately 120 feet. There was a question on the message board about why the proposed roadway does not follow the easements which cross the property, and the answer to that is that it's best if roads intersect with other roads at 90 degrees. So the way that the easement intersects 1984 is at a strange angle that would actually cause safety concerns, so we like roads to come together at 90-degree angles. There were discussions at the last meeting about the location of the intersection, and just wanted to let the council know that this alignment does align with property that's owned by the county for future extension of the roadway. This was set aside for the road to extend and was approved by Caldwell County in March of this year at the request of the previous property owner. And we don't actually have an exhibit of that, but if you can imagine that where that road hits 1984, there's a sliver of land that goes behind those homes that the county approved for the extension of a future roadway. Next slide. As discussed at previous meetings, the proposed roadway is identified on the city's thoroughfare Next slide. Thank you. And a wider view of this plan was uploaded to the message board today, which shows the roadway connecting to State Highway 80 farther to the roadway connecting to State Highway 80 farther to the east. While the final alignment is not quite known, we do know that there will be some connectivity in a Highway 80 in the future and it will be determined as the property in this area develops. Responding again to a question from last meeting, I'd like to reiterate that property owners may only construct roads and develop on land that they own. They cannot go onto other people's property in order to do any of their work unless they work it out with that property owner, but their development and construction has to be on property that they own. Next slide. I'm actually going to skip the next slide because we talked about it at the last meeting. At the last meeting, I did reference that the development agreement exists, but I wanted to remind everyone of some of the terms in the agreement, and there are quite a few, but the agreement was created to benefit the community and included reducing overall impervious cover, and that reduction of impervious cover does include the roadways. So when we talk about overall, we're talking about the entirety of the project, it does include roadways. The development agreement also reduces post-construction runoff, so less water will be leaving the property when the project, as the project is developed. And there's also a prohibition on what we've called in the past, those bad neighbor uses, some of the loud, smelly, more environmentally unfriendly uses. So there are prohibitions on uses in the development agreement. The developer is able to construct the roadway in the county if annexation is not approved. They would just need to follow the county processes. And I can't speak specifically to the county processes, but there is a path forward for this roadway to be constructed whether or not the annexation is approved. And the developer clarified, we asked them about the municipal utility district question that came up at the last meeting, and they said they were never asked to establish a mud for this project. Next slide. We have a financial slide that was provided in the packet in April of last year. Next slide, please, thank you. And it shows how the project may build out and contribute to the city's property tax revenues. And now we're talking about the larger access logistics, smart terminal property, we're not just talking about this annexation. There are quite a lot of caveats on this slide, we don't know how quickly the project will build out, but we're assuming the current tax rate that we have today, so we know that may fluctuate over the years. We're also, like I said, assuming the timeframe, it could build out faster, it could be slower. But to summarize, the project could bring in $62 million annually when fully complete, the entirety of the project. But until then, the city will see incremental increases in tax revenue as the project develops. Construction of the roadway and associated utilities is the first step in kickstarting this development. Next slide. At the last meeting, City Council voted 4 to 3 to approve the annexation of the seven acres for the roadway. Staff recommends approval, and this evening, you're voting on the annexation ordinance on second and final reading. We have Ben Ruby on the call, he's the, representing the applicant if we have any questions, but for now, that will conclude my presentation.
I need a motion.
Motion to postpone to the next meeting, first meeting in September, Mayor.
Do you want to make that motion now, or do you want to have some conversation before we do? I need a motion to approve or deny before I do a postponement.
I'm not making a motion for discussion, we can discuss before either way.
Your motion is?
To postpone.
No, I'm not accepting a motion to postpone because that's subsidiary to an actual motion. I need a motion to approve or deny at this point, to get it on the table, we can talk about postponement afterwards.
I'm not making that motion.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Approved, get on the table, all right.
I'll second that for conversation.
Okay.
America, can you provide some clarity as to why, like the Roberts Rules of Orders of it all, why we couldn't postpone?
Just... That's because I'm following Roberts Rules of Order. Postpone is subsidiary to a motion that's already on the table. We did it, in my opinion, not right for a long time.
She's correct, she's correct on the Roberts Rules.
Right, but we have done motion to postpone in the past, right?
I know.
Okay.
But not today. I tried not to, and someone else said we could and I had to go by what they said.
Not today, I mean, I don't care.
If I did, if I did do the motion to postpone, it takes the discussion off the table, that's why.
But it had it in the past, but today it does, okay.
So now that the item is there, you can have a motion to postpone the discussion now or deeper into the discussion, but it's...
Right.
On the table.
I wasn't trying to scold the discussion, I want to hear what everybody's got to say.
Well, I figured you did, so, yeah, a motion to postpone would have, we'd voted on that and, of course, if it failed, we'd still be here talking. There's something that I want to clarify. I'm the one that asked about the easements, I was talking about the power line when I said utility, and I don't understand the answer about why it has to be perpendicular. My, my concept was why not just follow that utility easement all the way through?
Yes, ma'am, because the road FM 1984 is like this and the easement is like this, and when you have those strange angles in a roadway, it makes it more dangerous for turning movements, so we try to get 90-degree angles, so it needs the curve away from the easement in order to make that 90-degree intersection.
And is that, is that possibly why this was changed from the original alignment? Is that something we would have required?
So when we're talking original alignment, are you referring to the exhibit that was provided by Mr. Brock earlier?
I assume that came from an open records request and came from our files.
I don't recall creating a map like that, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure where that one came from. How I've been referring to the different alignments with this roadway is the development agreement concept plan, which showed a, kind of a shorter curve, and then the engineered request for annexation, which is what we have in front of us today.
But that was a concept plan and not...
Correct, and we do have Mr. Ruby if you wanted to ask a question about any of the intent, but the engineered drawings and the annexation request came in as being presented.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not seeing the, the thing about the alignment because I'm not, I'm not seeing it, but that's just, just me, so we'll set that aside. I'm still waiting, and not from you, from the developer or somebody who knows why the, why the change. I asked last time and our folks said it wasn't due to topography, it wasn't something that was required to get out of a floodplain or something, so I'm still looking and I'm guessing that Mr. Ruby is the one who's most likely to be able to answer that.
Hey there, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can, glad to see you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. So, you're, you're exactly right and Amanda's correct as well, so traditionally with roadway design, we do not want the roads to intersect at an acute angle, it creates sight-distant triangle issues and curve radius issues and stuff that are, are not allowed per state and federal design regulations, including city standards, so that is part of the reason the road is located where it's at. As far as the alignment, we've considered multiple different alignments, but we've been showing the same alignment since the plans were submitted back in January with, with city staff.
Yeah, the, what I'm looking at is original, is still, the curve is just in a different place, basically.
And Mayor, I'll, I'll just share that Mr. Ruby does not have this. This, I think, might be a misrepresentation that the city created this map that's called original alignment, and I'm just looking at the handout, I'm not certain where else it might be called original alignment, but the city did not, we did not create that map
for this packet, so... I understand that. But, good point.
So he's, he's not looking at what you're looking at.
Yes, and, I was looking for the one that I had that had the Kimble Horn notation on it, this one, but that doesn't have the other alignment, but, but neither one of them, I mean, there's a curve away from the utility line, either way. So, I guess my question was wrong, I should have said, why isn't it a little further down? I, I, I just don't see that that's why it got changed.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ruby, the intent for the Caldwell side off of 1984, this road that would be on, that we would connect to if everything works out here or doesn't work out, whatever, is your intention to connect it to Highway or County Road 240, which is known as Quell Run?
I, I believe that that's the intent of the existing right-of-way that's there. At this time, we do not have any plans to, to proceed past 1984 to the east.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody on the side, comments, thoughts?
I mean, just, in, in general, I think the, the project's a, will be a regional job creator and, and a economic asset to not just San Marcos, but the whole central Texas region, so I know there's some, there's some details we're trying to work out with some of these road alignments, but I think overall, it's a, it's a good project.
And, and I've been supportive of this project for a long time, I know that disappoints some people, but I have been in support of the project. My only concern right now is this roadway, which is not yet built, coming in behind because I believe that it's going to be extended and coming in right behind some folks' houses, I'm, I'm just having trouble with that, especially if it's supposed to be an alternate route to AV, that means there's going to be big trucks on there. And I said last time that, you know, the difference is, is it going to be at the back of an industrial area, which could have trucks backing up to loading docks all night long with the beep, 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 which, that's not good either, or the roadway? And I'm not sure which is worse. If you know what business is going in there and you find out, you know, maybe it's not a high-impact, it's not a 24-hour, you know, it's more of an eight-to-five advanced manufacturing or something, would be different. So, I'm still, I'm, I'm still concerned on this one, it's just not making sense to me and nobody's given me the really good reason as to why it got changed.
Mayor, can I chime in?
Please, I'm looking, I'm looking for somebody who's ready to speak.
I figured you were. So, you know, overall, I'm, I'm in support of the project. I, I still have some reservations about exactly these road alignments. This is going to be the first of many discussions on infrastructure that's going to go in out there, and we were given a little bit of information in executive session that made me a little, just made me, give me some things to contemplate, and I, I want a little more time to review that information and do a little more research is the main reason I'm wanting to postpone this. So, I'm going to make a motion to postpone until the first meeting in September.
Is there a second to a motion to postpone?
I will second that.
All right, let's see. Ms. Trevino, are buttons working? We think, let's give it a try. This is a motion to postpone. Ah...
They're working.
All right, well, that's pretty clear. So that's where we are, we have disposed of this one, and we are now to item 5, which also was pulled.
Consider approval ordinance 2024-31, the second of two readings, amending Chapter 90, Article 4, records of the San Marcos City Code for the purposes of modifying signage requirements, placing responsibility for administering the wrecker rotation system with the city marshal, improving safety equipment requirements, increasing the response time allowed for wrecks, improving impound and inventory requirements, expanding the locations for storage facilities to include the extraterritorial jurisdiction, increasing maximum fees for all types of tow's and related services, creating a duty for storage facilities to report vehicles received to the police department, and providing new fines and penalties for violations, including procedural provisions and declare an effective date.
And I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
And my concern is where we were last time, is to make sure that we don't go, what was this, 2008, I think, regarding fees. And what we have done for so many of our fees that the city does is we have taken the dollar amounts out of the ordinances and put them in a fee schedule, and we go out and re-review those fee schedules every so often, I think it's supposed to be once every three years. It doesn't exactly make sense to do that since this is not our fee, but I think we need to make sure that we don't lose track of it. And so what I have is I have a motion to amend, that we add this section that you see up here on the screen in red, it's a section 90 dot 296, fee increases. A, the fees provided herein shall be automatically increased by 3% annually, beginning on October 1st of 2025. And then we have B, the fees provided herein shall be reviewed periodically, but no less than every three years, whether together or with or separately from other city cost recovery permitting or similar fees presented to the City Council for approval. That's my motion and I'll, I'm looking for a second.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. What we've got basically, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Reyes, is we've got all of our fees divided into three groups, we look at each group every year, except for some that are regulated by law that have to be on a different schedule, is that? Okay, so, I'll leave it up to you as to which one it goes on, and as a reminder that we're going to look at these on a routine basis, that's the purpose of this amendment. Are there any questions on the amendment? If not, Ms. Trevino will vote. All right, and now we are to, the, the main motion as was provided, y'all have anything? Anything come to mind since we passed it? We're ready to vote on the main motion as amended.
Okay. All right. Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you very much, and our next item that was pulled is item 6.
Consider approval resolution 2024-141R, approving the reallocation of $1,010,418.15 in funds received by the city of San Marcos under the American Rescue Plan to support the recovery of the community from COVID-19 and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Garza.
Okay, don't worry, Hayden, I'm not going to make you work. So, yeah, I just, I felt it important for me to express this. So, the item concerns the reallocation of over a million dollars in ARPA funds, while I recognize the general usefulness and need for these allocations, I wanted to voice, once again, my reservations about the process by which these allocations have been decided. Nationally, ARPA funds have been provided, have provided a unique opportunity for cities to engage directly with their residents, reimagining public engagement and ensuring that the voices of the community drive the allocations of the critical resources. Fortunately, I felt that our approach has not lived up to the standard, I've said that, I think, every single time we've talked about ARPA money. Despite conducting a community survey, its results were overlooked, my continued advocacy for community-led allocations have been outvoted. The process we adopted has not prioritized the most pressing needs of our neighbors, keeping them housed and fed, or addressed equity concerns adequately. While I appreciate the hard work our staff has done to manage the funds and provide updates, the method for deciding the allocation of these funds did not sufficiently center our community's voice or its most pressing needs, but given the discussions of the August 5th work sessions, I think it was August 5th, where it became clear that my concerns are not broadly shared by my colleagues, I won't be proposing any amendments or further delaying the decision, but I just felt it was like really important for me to voice why I was going to vote no. Again, generally, very useful, necessary items, it was the process, and maybe if I sound like a broken record every time, our next emergency pandemic, JK, knock on wood, we will take a more community-centered approach.
Any other comments?
I do, Mayor. I, I too have some qualms about how this last allocation played out. The Chief Stevens did a good job of explaining why we did what we did and we're going to do what we're going to do, and I, I want to, I want to thank you, you all for your efforts in making that project happen. In the long term, and, you know, this money was allocated to make up for lost revenue and to help out communities in need in general. And, and so, a lot of these ARPA funds have been used for a lot of different things, and this is a proactive way to get emergency response communications into a part of Guadalupe County and parts of San Marcos city limits, including an elementary school that do not have radio communications. And overall, this would have ended up costing us several million... ended up costing us several million dollars had we had to do this. And so this was about collaboration and proactiveness on behalf of government. And the reason we didn't get a ton of time put into it, it was because it was a time-sensitive manner. And um and so I uh I too have qualms about how it played out, but I also want to thank you for for making this project happen. Um otherwise, it may have been five or ten years down the road before we found the capital improvement money to make to make this happen. And this is going to make our elementary school on the east side of town and Redwood have better communications. That is an extremely, extremely important thing. So um I I hear Ms. Garza's concerns, and um I I don't want us to fall down that trap. But as long as you're coming into us and bringing us proposals that are collaboration, saving some taxpayer funds, public safety in mind, I I'm going to be in support of it. So um I appreciate her comments, but I also want to want to thank the collaboration with Guadalupe County, which I feel has been lacking for a very long time. I think we all have, especially in the Redwood area. So um I I those are just my comments on it, and I will be in support of it. And and thanks for staff for being proactive and trying to save the taxpayers of San Marcos some money.
Yeah, it was it was impressive collab. Again, don't doubt the usefulness. And you know exactly what to say, Mark. You know, I got a soft spot for my Guadalupe, Redwood, and my east side schools. You're good. You're good. But I agree with all that. It's just a culmination of everything. Um but now, if anybody could pull it off, it was chief duh, uh and staff uh for that conversation, so.
Yeah. The original cost of this was four million something, and through some really hard work by some really good people, they were down to seven sixty, which we can take out of money that was granted to us. But this is a huge safety, public safety improvement. Uh anything else?
No.
No? Then we'll vote.
Zip, one absent. Sorry about that.
Okay, our next pulled item. Is that mine? It's item twelve.
Sorry, Mayor. Okay, number twelve. Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one forty-seven R approving an inter-local agreement with Hayes County to provide Hayes County with animal shelter services, authorize city manager to execute the agreement, and declare an effective date.
Um I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. And I have an amendment, and it's it's real simple. It's on the first page. And in the sentence where it says, San Marcos Animal Services Division currently operates and maintains a regional animal shelter, but intends to transfer regional responsibilities to Hayes County at the end of this agreement term, and then operate a local animal shelter for San Marcos only. And my proposal is to insert the words "the city of" in front of San Marcos, so that it's clear we're talking about the corporate city limits or the people whose taxes pay for the shelter. Uh it's not for everyone with a San Marcos address, because many of those folks are in the county.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining from this uh item due to my employment with Hayes County.
Yes. Well, make that notation. Thank you, Mr. Prather.
I'll second your motion, Mayor.
Uh thank you very much.
Your amendment.
Thank you. Um. And Mr. Prather's abstaining. Uh Mr. Carr, any comments? Any was there a better way to say that, or?
Nope, that was perfect, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh comments on this part, on the amendment, and we will vote now, Ms. Trevino?
This is on the amendment?
Just the amendment. Then we'll keep talking about it. Okay, five, five, one, one. Okay. Uh and now we're back on the main motion for comments or concerns, um whatever have you. Ms. Garza.
Me?
Did you have anything?
Yeah. Um yeah, I this is about the animal shelter. Um yeah, so I went ahead and reached out to Stephanie earlier. I reached out to the mayor just to get a better understanding of how we got to the agreement. Um I was notified that many of our colleagues from the county, the other commissioners, had not uh read that yet. Um and legal had just reviewed it. I my understanding was like today. And so I was just wondering kind of what the how that came to be, and wanting to know from my colleagues how we want to proceed with this. Um do we want to give them an opportunity to contemplate it, or or how is that process going to work out? Because they they seemed a little bit surprised that they had yet to read the agreement.
Yes, Councilman Greg Carr, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement. So we've talked about this in the uh council committee. We went over some of the changes and why we were making those changes. And um so we have our three partners, the county, Buta, and Kyle. One of the big uh things that the partners need to do is match their ordinances with ours. And uh Ms. Kupinski has been working with them to do that. So we have been working with the county on that. Um so it's really to pass it here on what we want, and then go to the county. Um we're coming to the end. This isn't a negotiation anymore. This is we're getting out of the business. And this is what we need for us, so we can survive. It's um we all know the overcrowding and everything that we have there.
Well, the county's made it known that they're looking to do this. And it's my opinion, if anybody in the county's listening, it's time to get a move on uh to get this done because we we can't do what we've been doing anymore, where we're taking all the brunt of um everything that's going on.
And Mayor, if I may, and correct me if I'm wrong on our discussion, uh I spoke to city manager about this earlier, and the council really has two options: to go ahead and approve it and hope for the best that the county has no changes. But the worst-case scenario is they'd simply come back with some additional changes, and we can reconsider. But if they're good, it's done and over with. The other option, of course, is to postpone it. But either method, if they have changes, would result in two meetings. So I think our recommendation was go ahead and approve it. Worst that could happen is we come back with an amendment.
Well, so somebody's got to go first. And since it's on our agenda for tonight, first thing is let's make sure our council likes it. And then it goes to the county, and like you say, conversations uh will will begin. Um so you've had discussions with folks at the county?
Staff, we've met with staff on some of the changes that are coming, the line individuals, and then with their legal on updating their statutes, yes. And in fact, Buta council meeting tonight, they're talking about animal ordinances.
Okay. Oh, good.
And Mayor, just I did speak also with the county, their attorney as well, to to let her know that of these two options. And I I I think in any case, we had an understanding that if they have a change, we'll certainly bring it back if that is the case.
Yeah, and and that that's fine. That's to be expected. So that's okay. Mr. Mendoza.
Uh thank you, Mayor. I guess my concern is the timeframe. If county is saying, or their lawyers are saying, that they just maybe recently started looking at this, or some of our commissioners were caught off guard, do we know when we officially sent this to them for review?
The ordinance or the agreement and all the there's a ton of attachments to stuff went over the beginning of this month.
So they did have at least twenty days
Yes.
to to review this, and so it's not
It went to the judge.
Okay.
That's the point of clarification. Someone and how they communicate there is
Oh, okay. I just want to make very clear that we did, as a city of San Marcos and as a council, we did our job as to do the right thing as far as county. Now, if county and and I I love my commissioners, but if they weren't aware of it, that's not our fault. I'm sorry, we passed on the information. They're not doing the due diligence, um which we all know that's the case. Um so I just want to make sure that, please, let us know we did everything correctly. I'm proud of my staff for just being a hundred percent on board. Um thank you for clarifying that. I just want to make sure we know.
I just felt, I mean, I was uh approached in court earlier, and I just felt like it was important to name this. But I also uh stepped uh down from the Animal Services Committee. Thank you, Matthew, for taking my place. Um but I do know you guys have been working really hard on this. I I feel if this is what the committee is bringing forth, I this is what I support. Um when it comes, I was just concerned about the timeframe, and maybe in the future, we'll just uh figure out a way to communicate that perhaps the the county should um uh yeah, have discussions about getting the information uh on their agenda to discuss it so that we don't have to keep uh prolonging the conversation. Yeah, I mean, no, I think we did it fine. I just think it just stayed in one email box.
It sounds like it it's because it went to the judge, and it didn't necessarily go to all the county commissioners.
To put it on their agenda.
To look at it. So I think that's the
Thank you for an idea of what happened.
That's the that's the clarification that that, as I understand it, from a council member got us today. So um
Well, the other part of that, too, is I want to send them a document that we've decided, the majority of us have decided on, right? Like that's and it's not a good it's like, hey, here's what we approved. And if they want to modify something, they're more than welcome to. I mean, there's a separation there. So I I I don't have too big of a problem with how it's handled. And the document is good.
Somebody's got to go first.
Somebody's got to go first.
And Buta's talking about it right now.
Yeah.
So then we're going to come back and do another alignment of the ordinances.
Alignment tonight. And there's both their city managers, Kyle and Buta, have been talking to us. They know we've talked to them again about the changes that are coming.
Okay.
And they have, at the same time, got a copy of the their version, because it's a little bit different.
They got to align the ordinances first, and then this would be the next. This this isn't going to come before that.
The ordinances can come later. It's just they have time.
Okay.
I think it's two months after this is signed that they need to get. But we've been working on that in advance because
That's cool.
there's a lot of, just the way they think and the way we think, it takes more time to smooth that through.
That that's now been known for what, six months, four months?
Yeah.
So. I I had direct com- uh communication with the city managers in both Buta and Kyle. And the the three things that I asked them were have the the ordinances match ours um to have them market the animals um when they have events and things like that, and then for their them to consider participation with pals to address pet overpopulation.
Amazing.
And so those were the three things that um I sent over to Brian Langley and Micah Grau in Buta. And then we did talk about uh some stuff with Hayes County as far as, hey, we're letting you know that we're not going to be in the regional shelter business. Um but as far as like seeing the the agreement, it sounds like that went to the judge and not necessarily to the county commissioners.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I agree with with your what you all said. We are we're down. Like we this is what we've talked about for a very long time. So, okay. Yeah, no problem. Thank you guys for working on this. This was a lot of a lot of time in the making, a lot of good research. I appreciate it.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Push your buttons.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one abstained.
All right. Can someone get Mr. Prather? Uh no, we're going to take a break. Uh we'll just take a break now. Sorry, Chief. He was ready. Uh we will come be be back in your seats, ready to go at seven tw- seven thirty, please. Return from our break at seven thirty, and we are on item sixteen.
Approve, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-one R approving an interlocal agreement with the San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District for the city's provision of police officers to the school district to serve as school resource officers, authorize the city manager or designate to execute said agreement on behalf of the city, and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Second? Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Uh Ms. Garza.
Thank you, Mayor. Um yeah, I think I just pulled this because, just like given the profound community uh and statewide discussions currently ongoing about policing, right, to our local conversation, we just heard a whole lot about that uh at the beginning of the meeting. Um but also school safety, especially in light of like the recent heart-wrenching developments that were uh kind of dropped uh from what happened in Uvalde. It just struck me as like interesting that this such a significant matter would be placed on consent agenda, also because historically it's been pulled. So it's like, you guys, there's like a pattern here. Why don't we just not put it on consent agenda? Um but my questions in particular, can you guys just like briefly explain the few amendments that were on there? I think there's only like two or three.
Kyle, you're here. Now you can, sorry. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Stand Standards Police Chief. I'm not sure what you're referring to by a couple of amendments. The most significant change is the option for a two-year contract versus it coming back to council every year. And then at the end of the two-year, then through mutual agreement with the superintendent and the CM, the city manager, then the contract can be renewed. That's the most substantive change as it relates to this contract or ILA.
You said the first one was the the contract may be renewed for an additional two years termed by agreement of the city manager, right?
And and the superintendent.
Yes. And then what was this, the other one that you named?
I didn't. That's it. That to me, that's the most substantive change. I'm not sure what what you're referring to.
Well, the other two. I just wanted kind of like to understand the rationale.
Can you point me to what the other two are? I don't have the contract in front of me.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Um yes, so uh ten point one, also under the term of agreement. The term of this agreement shall begin on August thirteen, twenty twenty-four, the first day of da-da-da-da, right? Um this agreement cannot be changed, terminated, or modified other than as provided in the provisions here and outlined in this agreement. Is this only because we're changing the dates, or was another piece changed? Because this is not redlined. It's just all red fonted. Does that make sense?
Right. So to me, that nothing there is substantive, and I'll defer to our city attorney. But all the only thing that we sought to change was we're bringing this back to you all every year. Every year it's approved. Every year it does warrant discussion. I'm perfectly fine with discussion and transparency. And I know Miguel Arredondo is here today. He serves as a board of trustees with the school district. And so the concern from us was, for a sheer uh purpose of time, both on the ISD and for the police department, and for the city manager, could we do this every second year versus every year? So Sam, can you? I don't I don't know that there's anything else substantive that I could add to that.
It's really not a legal issue uh as far as
No, I just wanted to understand the rationale. Um I I'm just going to state it. I know none of y'all are gonna agree with me. I think I know y'all fairly well. I do think that we should talk about it every year. Um that's just where I'm at. Um but I'm also just willing to let it go, since I already know nobody else is going to agree with me.
Uh don't, 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 don't.
I'm usually right there.
I do agree with you.
Well, that's crazy.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, just because uh keeping an eye on the contract is just good business. Uh you know, I I don't have a problem with that.
The only thing I would add, Mayor, Council, is the state legislature also has a seat at this table, and they have enjoined upon all districts that they shall have a firearm on each campus. They don't mandate that it be a peace officer. The school districts can accomplish that through a peace officer, a school marshal, or a guardian. But they shall have. If they don't, they have to seek a waiver through the Board of Trustees, which would then be evaluated by the T E A, Texas Education Agency. So the direction from the legislative level is moving toward campus safety by having armed presence on each campus.
Right. I don't think anybody is pushing back on that right now. I just I really do. I have found all the conversations to be useful, the multiple times we've pulled it from consent, I think, every year I've been in office. Um I know some of our neighbors have appreciated it. Um and I also think because at least two, possibly three members of the council are like it might change, like do like doing this, like we're locking it in to the like new council members not being able to have this conversation next year, they would have to wait another year.
I but well, I tell you what, I don't I don't see it that way. And here's why. You can always put it on the agenda. Two people could put it on the agenda anytime and discuss it.
Then why put it on here, then?
It's on here for a two-year, and the city manager can approve it. But if council wants to change that in the future, they could certainly do that. I actually don't see a reason to discuss this every single year, because then it's on the agreement, then it's on a public hearing, and then it's on consent. And and we have enough to do, staff has enough to do.
Not a public hearing.
Huh?
Not a public hearing.
This isn't, but don't we have a public hearing with this in the past?
No.
How many times have we discussed this this year already? Three? How many? It's been on the agenda at least a couple times.
No, we've discussed the, I think. No, we've discussed the, I think maybe you're confusing it with the juvenile, uh, what was it, the?
Carfue.
Carfue.
It's just one of those, the workload is heavy enough on these agendas that I don't think this is one that we need to sit and review and discuss and have on the agenda every single year. But if a future council wants to do it, like two people can put it on the agenda and review it. It's gonna be locked in for two years at a time, but that doesn't mean it couldn't be requested. And that gives you time to modify it too, right? That it gives some, it gives some stability to the agreement of that's a future council just doesn't come in and change it right away and catch the school board off guard too.
And they would have an entire academic year, cause the new people are being sworn in in November.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna jump in here and I'm gonna say I think it should be a one-year agreement. I think we need it. I don't like that it's, we're looking at it after school has started. I think it.
That's part of the problem.
Hold on.
That's what I'm getting at.
No, you weren't even there. Um, I, I would really like to see this in May or June or as soon as we can get agreement with the, the, has the school board already done, reviewed this?
Uh, yeah, last night.
Thank you. Um, I, I think this should be once a year and I think it should be sooner. And I think we used to do it uh every three years or was that curfew? Anyway, when you do something every two, three years, sometimes it gets missed. Been there, seen that. But my question was, was the intent that this be a two-year agreement? And so when it says for an additional, it says additional two-year term, I was thinking it said two and I'm going, is this gonna be a six-year agreement or something? I don't know, but it doesn't matter because I think it should be one and reviewed, but sooner than August, especially after the school year has already started. So I have a problem with that. But I do like one of the big changes. I will say there's a huge change in here. And it's five point seventeen added. And I will quote, uh, it is in the duties section, to serve as a liaison between San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District and our department and act as the first responder in the case of a critical incident at school. I don't know that that's different in what we do, but I'm very happy to see it in here. And I thought that was the biggest, most significant thing in here um other than the term. So Ms. Garza, do you wanna make a motion to amend that part about the renewals? You, you jump in there.
And, and Mayor, just to.
And, yes.
Maybe a motion to approve on the table.
Yes, we do. And she's gonna make a motion to amend.
Okay.
Well, I.
Hi, Lon, I, whenever the city attorney wants to say something, he takes precedent.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, you'd mentioned about renewals, but uh one section does state an initial term. And I guess whatever the motion is, I guess to clarify, if you want the initial term to be one year with one-year renewals, just so you cover both, if that's the intent.
That sounds like the intent, right? See, I'm not the wordsmith. She is. Um, yeah, I'll uh make a motion to amend it, to copy and paste what you just said.
That would be ten point oh one.
Ten point oh one would be for a term of, I guess, one school year.
Well, I, I think um we just need to change it to say shall begin on the first day and end at the conclusion of the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five school year, which will be next year.
Correct.
And then we can just drop ten dot three.
Right, yes, that's what, that.
That would actually work?
I don't have a problem with removing the ten three.
Uh, if that's your, that's your motion?
That's, that's, that's the motion.
Now, wait a minute, now is that, is that two, that's two, two amendments there. Did you say remove the ten three and modify ten one?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
I can't do that, cause that's two different motions.
No, it's not two different motions. She can make it as one if she wants to.
That's correct, yeah.
She can. But I just wanna point to my colleagues, there's two different things here. I will support one of those, but not the other.
Do you wanna split them up?
Um.
I'll split the, the council.
Well, I feel like the way that you, the way that you outlined it and made it so that we get rid of ten point three and edit it, ten point one, like it doesn't make sense the other way.
It may be faster process-wise to just split them if people can support one and not the other.
Wait, what? So the ten point one then is gonna?
Make it a one year, not two years. So let's do, can we do that one first?
But wouldn't that cancel out ten point three anyways?
As provided, as stated by the mayor. And then you need a second on that one. And then we could do ten point three after that.
No, it, the ten three is a separate thing. That would just be renewing it for one year at a time. That's just the automatic renewal.
Gotcha.
So let's tackle ten one first.
That's fine.
Okay, which makes it one year.
As read by the mayor, changing it to twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five.
And now discussion on that is in order. I'll go to you first, Mr. Gleason.
Uh, I, I, I will support that the council can, should be discussing this every two years. I don't have a problem with that. Yes, I don't think it just need to be discussing it every year. That's, that's my, that's my thought on it. So I will support the removal of the ten three, but not ten one.
Okay, so we're still at ten one, which is making it a one year?
Mayor, just to make a comment on
Go ahead.
the value of SROs and uh, you know, SROs keep our schools, you know, much safer than the guardian programs. Um, fortunately, us and the school district were able to fund these five SROs. Not every school district, especially rules. School districts are, are so fortunate to, to have SROs in their schools. And so they have to um use the guardian program. But SROs on, on campus build relationships, rapport, along with just the physical element of just having that um officer there um on each campus. So I'm glad we do this, that having it one year, two years, I'm, I don't see that's that big of a deal. It's just kind of contracts and oversight and stuff, but just the value of having school resource officers on campus um cannot be understated.
Right. I just wanna clarify, I'm not uh speaking counter to what you just said. Um, uh, I I mean, you know this. I, I worked, I did significant research on SROs. Uh, one of the biggest findings was that like a lot of times there's a lack of understanding on both ends on like what is going on, right? I think I have been very satisfied with the continued engagement every year. The chase staff did a wonderful job at answering things, giving me historic kinda background, da-da-da-da-da. But I think that has come uh by discussing it every year. So I'm not the issue, or like I'm not bringing up the value of SROs. I'm bringing up that I think it's important um to review it every year to maintain what appears, I mean, that folks seem to be. I mean, the survey said that folks seem to be content with it.
And the, and these school resource officers go through additional training um to help specialize in, in being around kids and like I said, fostering those relationships. So I'm glad we have them there. And I know you're not talking um negatively about uh that aspect of it. So, yeah, let's uh, let's move forward with this.
Yeah.
Mayor, and I just, we didn't catch the second, it may have happened and I didn't catch it. Was it Mr. Scott? All right. Thank you. We get that noted. Thank you.
And I'll just make one last comment on ten one. My big thing is I just wanna bring some stability to the program. I don't want us to be discussing this in June and then we change that there needs to be additional training and school starts in August. It would be nice if you're on a two-year schedule that's six months to almost a year ahead of time, you could start those discussions. I'm just trying to bring some stability to it where there's not political changes being made in June and July to a program that's gonna be changed in August, because school board elections are in May. There, they could potentially be making changes in May. We're gonna be making them later and then you're running up on the school year. So that's my only thought on this is that, yeah, council needs to be reviewing it, school board needs to be reviewing it, community does. But I just don't feel like the timeline is that we're, it could be a football and I'm just afraid something is gonna.
Mayor, will this be in consent agenda when it does come up?
Could you get, get, speak into the microphone?
Mayor, uh, my question is, will this be in consent agenda when it does come up?
Ms. Trevino, I'm, I'm gonna refer to you about why it's on consent, but I will remind you, it can always be pulled.
Right, but if it's.
Is it, I mean, it's something we do every year. It's generally routine. That's why it would be on consent.
No, I, I'd rather have it in consent. Yeah, it's a lot faster.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just gonna say one of the reasons why I want to go, ten years ago, I might've been fine with longer term. But there's so many things changing in policing nowadays. There's things changing in schools. There's changes when policing and schools. And I think this deserves a look at every year.
Well, but I think this actually, if we make it two-year, actually makes for a better discussion. It gives you six months to a year to discuss something and a year, and in time to implement those changes.
We could discuss six months in advance anyway. Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't know why none of us have asked this, but Mr. Arredondo, could you please come to the podium, please? Sorry, I put you on the spot, but since you are one of our trustees, I
He's here.
want to ask this question. Um.
Yes, Councilman?
Thank you, sir. So what did the school board decide last night? What did you want? Do you want us to have a year or two years?
Uh, so the board of trustees, I guess disclaimer, I do not speak on behalf of the body corporate of the ISD. I am here and so I will.
But you were at the meeting.
Yes, I was. And I voted on the SRO contract. So last night, the school board voted unanimously to approve the contract as proposed by the city of San Marcos.
So you are, so the school board, all, was it a unanimous decision?
Yes, sir.
For two years?
As presented, yes.
As presented.
Did y'all discuss it?
Uh, we discussed.
The two-year thing?
We discussed the contract that was presented and yes, we approved it.
Did you discuss?
We did not debate the extension or the amendments to the contract.
Thank you, sir. So the reason I bring that up is staying our lane. It's great that we can provide these things, but it is the school's decision. It is, if they don't want the resources officers there, if they wanna come back and talk to us every year because we are supplying them, it's really us putting people there for them. So I think they should have say-so as, they want a year, do they want two years for them to come back and talk to us? I think we're overstepping our bounds and demanding something from them or negotiating something other than what they decided last night at their meeting.
But they've discussed it in the past.
Well, I'm talking last night. That's fine. We can talk about twenty years ago, but.
All right, we're not talking about twenty years ago, no, my mess.
But you're talking about the past. We're talking about last night, they decided that unanimously. It'd be different if it was a.
Look, see, see, guys, why are we putting on this whole show pretending that we're contemplating it? Just, that's why I didn't even bring it up to amend it. Like, y'all need to be for real. Nobody is like interested in really making it one year. We can just move on. It's fine. We don't need this whole show.
No, sure, it's.
Yeah, it's, at some point, we're, we're, we need to vote. Uh, Mr. Gonzalez expects his desire to speak. And then we need to vote and move on.
Uh, my question would be really, really quick. Were y'all given an option of one or two years, sir?
Is this presented?
As presented, it was just one option.
Uh, Councilman, when the board was presented with this contract, we had, like you, several days to review the packet and the agenda and the proposed language. And it was presented to us in its two-year form and we approved it as proposed by, I guess, the city manager and the superintendent who.
But y'all didn't debate one versus two?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, they wanna give you the option. And that just solidified my stance on ten one.
Okay, we're voting now. The motion
What are we voting on?
Is to basically, we're gonna uh, to, to change it from a two-year to a one-year contract is the motion that's on the table right now.
Hold on, Mayor, let me start it real quick.
Uh, now you're just playing games with those legs.
Mr. Gonzalez? Okay, the motion passes four to three.
Okay. Okay, uh, your next uh motion on ten three?
Okay, we just did ten one, right?
Yes, ma'am. We just went from two to one.
Then, then what, then what's, then ten three is obsolete now or I'm confused?
No, no, that's to auto-renew.
Oh, gotcha.
At however many years.
Yeah, no, I don't want that.
No, ten three is, is whether the city manager and the superintendent could approve additional agreements without without it having to come back to the school board and to the council.
Right.
The motion would be to delete ten three altogether?
Yes, we didn't have this before.
So we'll need a second for discussion.
And I'll make the second.
Okay.
I was just trying to get it out there on the table. If there's no discussion, we're gonna vote.
And Mayor, the reason I'm gonna support this is what you said thereof, that this is one where I think that as the councils turn over and the school board trustees turn over, that they don't realize these agreements are being approved by, I mean, I'm, it, it could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and it does bring it to public light to have some discussion at least every couple of years um for public input. So that's why I'll, I'll support the removal of ten three.
Let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to one.
Okay, and as has happened before, we have made some changes uh due to that fact. It goes back to the school board. And they will decide whether to accept or reject. And I think y'all have accepted some and rejected others at times, so.
Sorry, Miguel.
There's that.
Thank you, sir.
No, that was to remove the automatic uh renewal. Um, and thank you for the uh survey data that we have asked for. Nobody acknowledged that. Thank you, and that was very enlightening. So I appreciate that.
I would also point out that all school resource officers plus their supervisors are now mental health peace officers.
They're doing a great job. Thank you, sir.
Could've led with that.
I knew.
All right, uh, now we need to vote on the main motion as amended on ten one and ten two. I keep waiting for the call my name.
This is the first time I voted for a school resource uh officer contract, so that's just me appreciating.
Okay, and
The strikes.
I believe we have now completed our consent agenda. We've only got forty-seven things left, so we'll move on. Actually, I think it's fourteen. Uh, item twenty, Ms. Trevino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold discussion regarding the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five fiscal year proposed budget. Set the dates of September third and September seventeen, twenty twenty-four as the dates to hold public hearings on the budget and provide direction to staff.
Ms. Reyes?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Today, we are presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty-five proposed budget, setting the maximum proposed tax rate and sharing a timeline of next steps. This process began with city council and directors coming together at revisioning session in January. You discussed our strategic plan and developed priorities for the next year, continued with the budget policy workshop in February, approval of the budget policy in March, and budget workshops in May and June. Over the past few months, our team has collaborated to critically examine our needs, communicate the challenges that all departments are faced with, and work in coordination with one another to identify priority projects and positions. Our thoughtful deliberation throughout this year's budget process has allowed us to identify ways to develop a budget that reflects a holistic operational approach, incrementally moves us to a more financially sustainable position, and anticipates the needs and constraints for future budgets. We have to take a multi-year outlook in order to start phasing in the programs and services currently funded through American Rescue Plan Act funding so that we are prepared. And they are added to our base budget when the funds are exhausted at the end of twenty twenty-six. Building a budget is a dynamic process and involves many moving pieces. We are in a tight fiscal year and our staff has had to work together to be leaner in order to meet the needs and demands of our growing community. As sales tax revenues continue to decline, staff has updated our sales tax for, sales tax forecast models in order to reflect that trend. In the future, we would like to set better, we would like to better set ourselves up with a sales tax volatility fund to provide greater financial stability. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do that this year. That being said, we need increased property tax revenue to offset volatility in sales tax. We continue to strive to diversify our tax base, focusing on commercial development and a mix of housing projects in order to shield residents from property tax rate increases. We understand the need for housing that is affordable, but we also need higher-end housing to attract people to live in our community to help stabilize our tax base and put less burden on those who are struggling. We continue to monitor twenty twenty-four revenues and expenses as we forecast for twenty twenty-five. And we have decreased operational expenses in order to account for decreasing sales tax revenue. We also postponed most of our capital outlay purchases and implemented a managed hiring process. This year, I want to continue to focus on our greatest asset, our people, as well as planning for our future. In twenty twenty-two, we completed an employee engagement survey that asked our organization about benefits, pay, and professional development opportunities. Since then, we have completed the classification and compensation study and council has approved our compensation philosophy. In May, we surveyed employees again. And the results showed increased satisfaction from our employees toward their compensation compared to when we polled them in twenty twenty-two. In addition, we have fewer vacancies than we have had in years past, which demonstrates we are more effective in our recruitment and retention efforts. The proposed budget also includes re-implementing the homebuyer assistance program for city employees. This has multiple benefits by incentivizing employees to be more invested in our community by living in the city in which they work. And the city receives property taxes that are reinvested in our community. We recognize that the same cost drivers and inflation affecting city operations are also affecting our residents. So once again, we used a zero-increase budget approach. In addition, we continue to seek state and federal grant funding to assist in offsetting further strain on our current taxpayers. As they developed budgets for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, directors were tasked with holding their operational budgets at or below what they had in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. Throughout the process, departments went above and beyond to find and offer any funding they could to assist us in meeting our budget goals. This was a good demonstration of our director's teamwork and how we collaborate to address issues. We have heard from our community, and one of our focus areas is beautification. This effort includes a proposal to move one code compliance officer from community enhancement fund to the general fund to provide greater focus on landscaping and additional mowing. Riverfront parks will need additional funding if we intend to manage access, possibly generate revenue from visitors, and effectively implement the single-use container ban. This will likely mean investing more money in public safety for parks and parking resources. Public safety staffing continues to be a priority, and the city council has made significant progress in this area over the past couple of years. Our goal moving toward, forward is to fund two firefighters every year, once the safer grant is expended, and to fund two police officers and one telecommunications officer per year. We are funding two police officers in FY twenty-five, as well as converting some of the positions in the marshals' area from part-time to full-time. We have also set aside up to thirty thousand dollars in funding to conduct a city marshal staffing study. The added demand to keep our utility rates low and rising costs has whittled away at our utility reserves, and we must ensure we remain in a finance, in a sound financial situation. We must take a multi-year outlook as we plan for the future. That is why we are recommending slight increases to our electric and water wastewater rates to avoid large increases in the future in line with the budget policy that you approved. We also heard your comments at the June budget workshop regarding utility assistance. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Coordinator Griselda Betis Carey completed a high-level evaluation of the program and will present her findings as well as resources available to residents. Community engagement is important, and we have many ways our residents can reach out to us. Our SMTX Connect Report Tool was implemented in August twenty-twenty and has served as an effective tool for our residents to report issues or concerns they encounter in the community. To date, we have received almost five thousand tickets over the past four years. This year alone, we have received eight hundred and sixty tickets from our residents. The nature of the problems reported to our community include grass, weeds, trees, road-related items like street signs, abandoned vehicles, dead animals, trash, and utilities. We are continuing to seek increased public engagement throughout the budget process. This has included live streaming the city council visioning sessions and videos featuring, featuring our budget staff highlighting public engagement opportunities throughout the process. We have also presented both the budget and CIP to the Neighborhood Commission and the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. I would like to thank Finance Director John Locke, the budget team, and our leadership team for all of their hard work in developing next year's budget while carefully navigating our current financial situation. I also want to thank, um, sincere thanks to Mayor and Council for your time and commitment to our beloved community. I will now turn it over to Mr. Locke to provide tonight's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reyes. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Just looking at the agenda of what we're going to discuss this evening, uh, we began with the Ms. Reyes's remarks. Next, we'll look at the budget development timeline. We'll go over all the different budget, uh, policy statements that city council created, and we'll provide an update of where we are on those. We'll discuss the general fund and major special revenue funds, as well as the enterprise funds. Beginning with council's strategic goals, all of the budget items should point back to council's strategic goals. These goals were refined during the visioning process this year, and as we were going through the budget process, everything that, uh, staff was doing ensured that it was pointing back to one of council's strategic goals. So this is our current budget calendar. Um, it began, uh, like we just discussed in, in visioning, in January. Council set the budget policy in March, and we provided a presentation to the Neighborhood Commission, um, on the budget. We've had two budget workshops, and we're here this evening with the proposed budget being submitted to city council. And, um, following this, we'll set the maximum proposed tax rate for next year. Tomorrow, there'll be, uh, another, uh, condensed presentation, uh, provided to the Neighborhood Commission. And then there'll be four public hearings, two on the tax rate and two on the budget. And then the budget scheduled to be considered and tax rate to be adopted on September seventeenth. So we'll, we'll begin by going over, um, all of the budget policy statement items. This first slide, um, first couple of slides really speak to fund balance. These are the fund balances that city council set for the different funds. The only item that's not, um, directly tied to a fund balance threshold is the second item, which is the use of the fund balance in excess of twenty-five percent for one-time expenses and direct remaining to future city hall. That has been addressed in this budget, and, and you'll notice at the far right, the status, if it is, if it's green, then that means it's addressed. If it's yellow, there's something that prevented us from completely addressing it, and if it's red, it would mean that we, it was not addressed. On the next slide, uh, this is continuing the, um, fund balance information, and, uh, we were able to meet all the fund balance thresholds that were set by city council. And the, um, fund balance in excess, um, thresholds that were exceeded, uh, we set aside funding for one-time expenses. So we'll begin, uh, with going over revenues, um, the, first with, uh, continuing budgeting revenues using historical trends, and especially given, um, the slight, uh, the decline in sales tax this year. Council added that each, uh, revenue source would be evaluated independently, and that, um, consideration would be given for any kind of recent, uh, trend changes and, you know, as we experience with, with sales tax. So that was done, uh, for all of our different revenue sources. On the, um, for the utilities, uh, we use an incremental rate, uh, uh, rate increase approach rather than going a few years without any kind of increase and then having a really large increase. And, uh, in terms of developing a plan to regularly review fees, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, we'll be reviewing the special events fee as well as the other charges and, and fees associated with the utility funds. So, uh, these are items, um, such as new account fees or, um, recent, uh, or reconnect charge fees, those types of fees. Fees that aren't set to the user rates that, that city council and the Citizens Utility Advisory Board review every year. Um, also wanted to mention with the impact fees, that, um, those are in the process of being updated. Uh, they're about fifty, the study's about fifty percent complete, and, uh, staff believes that those will be completed in the next six to nine months. Continuing with revenues, uh, council set the statement that the property tax rate would be kept the same as the fiscal year twenty-four tax rate, and the budget as proposed, uh, does keep the tax rate the same. There is a yellow light on amend the budget during the fiscal year if revenues deviate from budget. The reason that this is yellow, um, you know, we've, we've had a lot of discussion, and, and we provided, um, monthly memorandums to city council on sales tax and, um, as well as the, um, what staff was doing with the sales tax contingency plan to reduce expenses to try and offset the lost revenue. So this one is yellow because we didn't, we haven't amended the budget. Uh, we did make city council aware of it, though, and have been identifying expense offsets. Looking at the, uh, potential revenue sources, uh, to include fees that would be evaluated during the process, budget process. There is a new fee included in the budget, and that is the fire inspection report fee. And, uh, consider the American Rescue Plan Act funding. The next slide, uh, provides all the items in the budget that are funded with the ARPA funded, funds. Uh, we have the cybersecurity, IT security analyst, the mental health diversion and support program, eviction prevention services, partnership with Preventa Letter of Central Texas. Downtown staffing, uh, there's one position that is, one of the two positions, uh, are funded through ARPA. The single-use beverage container ban implementation for education and outreach, and the integrated library system implementation. All of these items were funded with ARPA in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. The, we continue to use the annual rate study to determine when possible rate changes, uh, may be warranted in the electric and water wastewater fund. And the Citizens Utility Advisory Board, um, will make and present recommendations to council related to those, um, rate adjustments. And, uh, we, we do have members of the IQ app, uh, with us this evening. For electric, um, explore identifying community-based charges separate from the electric utility rate. We have this as being yellow. This is something that we have begun to explore, and we will, um, as we're doing the utility other fees review, this is something else that we're also going to be reviewing as well, as part of that review.
Is that like if you request a, like, additional streetlight? Is that what that is?
Uh, this, this would just show on the, um, utility bill for electric, the different components that a customer is paying for. So that, there are some examples up there, uh, customer assistance programs or, uh, street lighting, that, that, that would show. So it, it's not, um, it's not a new charge. It's just how much of your bill you're paying that's going towards the, um, street lighting, for instance.
And I'm sure we're gonna, you know, uh, address that, like, this is not a new charge. We're just giving you a further breakdown of your, of where your, your electric bill is going to pay for?
Exactly. Yes, sir. And, uh, this is something that, that we would, uh, be taking to the Citizens Utility Advisory Board, and then that would come before council to, also to make that final decision.
All right, one more question with the electric. Have we been looking to try to, like, so you can check your smart meter basically the day prior. Is there any way we can try to get, like, real-time data to kind of gamify of, like, how much electric usage or water usage are you using in that moment, in that day, so people can be more empowered to, is there a leak in a toilet? Or, hey, turn those lights off, turn the AC up a couple of degrees, you know, things that help them save money?
I don't know. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Yorth might, might be able to.
I feel like every budget year that I've been a part of, I've brought this up, because I really think, like, if we help empower with the information and knowledge of, with these smart meters, like, the information's there, but how do we get it, like, more real-time access? It's a kind of, the gamify approach, where you look at your home, now, I've used fifty kilowatts today, you know, how do I, you know?
Tyler Yorth, Director of Utilities, uh, there is, uh, information along those lines available to you through, uh, Customer Connect. Uh, it, yeah, it, it's not real-time. We don't, we don't have, um, a, a system that can pull it back every instant, so you're looking at it. Uh, but you can look at, at, at fifteen or hourly, and you can set triggers, uh, for your, um, water usage, for example. You can set up different triggers that would tell you if you had significant water leaks or those kinds of things. So we had that. We lost it during an upgrade once that you may remember, since, since, see, Councilmember Gonzalez. Um, and, and then we had to go back and, and do a refresh. So we, we do have that capability. It's within your Customer Connect now. And, uh, of course, every generation that we have another upgrade gets you more granularity with, with closer to real-time data.
And for our citizens out there, like, a, a game I've been playing the past two summers is, you know, I've been doing more window treatments, and the first thing I do when I wake up in the morning is check to see how much electric usage I used the day prior, to the year prior. You know, like, you know, am I getting it down ten percent, thirteen percent, fifteen percent? But I think that, along with, hey, your toilet's been running, do you know that? That's an extra fifteen bucks you're paying on water. You know, how do we empower people with their usage in real-time? I really think it can be a cost-saving and, and, the, the technology's there. You can purchase stuff to put in your, um, breaker box and stuff, but I was just like, boom.
Yeah, we, so we don't have that, uh, available, like, at your breaker box level where we can't look and say, hey, how often is your hot water heater coming on on a given day? Uh, we don't have that kind of granularity, but the, at a, at a higher level view, you can go look and see, uh, you know, what you're using on, on a daily basis, uh, you know, different blocks at times. So that, that's available, uh, to folks out there.
If you're ever at a convention and you see something, like, we, we have an app that can, you know, like, help provide that real-time data, like, is this something I've been, been interested in for a while? Like I said, how do we help empower our citizens to, um, have their homes efficient? And like, like I said, do you empower them with the knowledge? People will start making those cost-saving measures.
We're all working on it, and I'm sure it's coming to you soon. Uh, we don't have it today.
I, I know, Mr. Yorth, um, some, some providers will give you that little kind of month, like, your usage kind of mid-bill. Um, so can you sign up for?
Your provider does that.
Yes. So does.
Not, not some, yours.
Yours, too.
Mine, too.
So do we, do we have that ability for, for customers to, um, sign up?
We, we don't, uh, actually, the technology, of course, is out there through our AMI system and our Customer Connect. It's actually an expensive add right now, so, uh, we haven't done it because we can't pull it out and then just target it to an individual, so it'd be an aggregate cost across the entire customer base. So from a cost standpoint, it hasn't come down enough yet where we thought it would be worth coming to you and, and bringing that as, as an option to put out there, so.
That's something we can continue to explore. I mean, I, I. Yeah, no, and that's, that's a.
No, we, we, we're, we're tracking those, those things, and, and, yeah, when we do go talk to other folks, uh, uh, we hear about those and, and look and consider those. We'll continue to do that.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, and, uh, that takes us to stormwater. Continue using the rate model to determine possible rate increases and minimize rate adjustments through use of the general fund's capacity to fund the, uh, capital improvement projects for stormwater. And that was done in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. And hotel tax, uh, continue to budget revenues based on a conservative historical trends. And, um, they're budgeting even more conservative this year, uh, based on the renovation of embassy suites, and, and we'll cover that a little bit later in the presentation. And, uh, in the air, airport research, the impact of using property tax and sales tax revenues generated at the airport, uh, for airport operations. Um, this was scheduled to begin in fiscal year twenty-six. We have done some, uh, initial research into this, and it's something that we will be, uh, bringing to city council next fiscal year. Departments, as Ms. Reyes, uh, mentioned in the opening remarks, uh, followed a zero-increase budget format, factoring. And, um, where, where it says factoring in necessary consumer price indexes, um, that's something that they were not able to do this year. Um, we'll, we'll go, we'll touch on inflation a little later in the presentation, but departments were asked to keep their budgets at the current fiscal year level, so there was an adjustment for inflation. Um, and I would like to also just emphasize that, um, the effort that departments made, um, in helping us meet our budget targets. I, it was a challenging budget year with property tax and sales tax both being, um, not, um, not growing as what the city has been experiencing in the last few years, and, and departments really stepped up in helping us meet those budget targets. The next item on here is, if the capacity allows, include an increase of three to five percent of total personnel cost. And that three to five percent of personnel cost, um, is included and used to invest in staff and to support city council's employee compensation philosophy. Uh, we also reviewed, uh, retention and recruit, recruitment strategies, and there's a, a slide later on in this presentation where we will discuss that. Uh, health insurance, um, also, um, stayed within that three to five percent, that, um, threshold that city council set. And, um, enhancing the city's grant program to max, maximize funding from other sources. The next slide in the presentation will, uh, just give some examples of some of the grants that the city has received that has helped reduce costs from the city. Um, the, the first one listed, there's the underrepresented, uh, underrepresented community grant, the nomination of historical buildings for the Calabas, Cephas, and Dunbar buildings. Uh, we had multiple water smart grants. We've had the, recently, the shared use pathway, and then the protect grant for the sun. and then the protect grant for the Sunset Acres Stormwater Project. Those are just examples of some of the grants that are included in the budget. Given available capacity, create budget based on the priority list developed during city council's visioning. During the visioning, citizen, city council prioritize a group of projects and programs and in the priority As, Bs and Cs. And all of the priority A items are addressed and included in the fiscal year 25 budget. And all of the priority B items are included with, except for parks maintenance. There is an increased funding for parks maintenance included in the budget. The other items were addressed. And all of the priority C items were addressed. You might notice some of these were funded through the ARPA funding that, that we covered earlier. This next item discusses the Human Service Advisory Board funding as well as the Community Development Block Grant. City council had already, has already received an overview of the CDBG allocations. And the HSAB recommendations are planned to be brought to city council the first meeting in December. One of the items that Ms. Reyes mentioned in the opening remarks was moving one manager from Community Development Block Grant to the General Fund. That is, well, actually, she did not mention that, but that is something that was in the budget policy statement and that is included. And the transit operations were discussed during the budget process. The animal shelter continued to operate with goal of a higher live outcome rate. And funding is included in the budget for, from all of the partner agencies. We continue to constrain the capital improvement program to keep the debt rate within the limits, within the city's debt model. And if cap, capacity allows, explore increasing the debt service component of the tax rate by 1%. That showing is yellow and that the debt rate did not increase by the 1%. It wasn't needed to support the capital improvement program in fiscal year 25. Explore policies that will provide funding for non-recurring expenses. This goes to the sales tax volatility fund that Ms. Reyes didn't mention. It was something that we came really close to. We thought we were going to be able to include. And when it came down to it, there just wasn't enough capacity to be able to implement that this year.
And then Mr. Locke, you are, you are looking at implementing that for 2026 potentially?
We would like to, yes, sir, certainly.
Yes. I would be in big support of that.
And the last item on this is continue to allocate funding for council strategic goals and that, that was done. Moving to the electric and water wastewater. The indirect cost allocation transfers to the general fund were budgeted at the amount that were determined by the cost allocation plan. The, there is funding allocated for historical restoration and preservation. We'll talk about that on a slide later when we discuss hotel tax. And use hotel tax funding for the city's branding plan. That request for proposal has been issued and it closes on September 12th. And community enhancement, continue to budget funds to address community enhancement items that may come up during the year. There is funding included in the budget for that. And this is one of the items that Ms. Reyes mentioned, which was moving one of the code compliance officers from community enhancement to the general fund. And that is included in the fiscal year 25 budget. And we, there's also one temporary downtown staff member that was moved to the, to the Main Street program. So that, that concludes all of the budget policy statements. So now we'll move into some benchmarking items. And just begin with our peer cities and a look at the population. You have, on the far right, you have San Marcos and on the far left is Austin. So you have anywhere between 71,000 and 979,000. There's a total of our 10 peer cities that we will compare ourselves against. And we need to use a common resource, so we use information from the U.S. Census Bureau as we move through this. I just mentioned that because it shows San Marcos is at 71,000. The internally, planning development by, by using permits have backed in, gone from the census data to estimate what our population is. And they have us as of July 1, 2023, we would be just under 82,000. The next slide will show the median household income. And this is from a low of College Station at 51,000 to a high of Sugar Land of 132,000. The average that, that you see there is the Texas, the state of Texas average. So the average is 72,000 and San Marcos is second from the right, second lowest at 52,000. Staff hasn't dug into the details as to why we are, you know, that far over to the right. The internal discussions is it's attributable to Texas State with the presence of the university and the students that, that dilute some of the median household income.
And you've answered this in the past, but just for anybody tuning in at home, how did you determine what, what do we call them, the peer cities are?
How did we determine the peer cities?
Yeah.
So these are the cities that we use to compare ourselves to when it comes to like our compensation studies. So we use, we use the same whenever we're doing benchmarks of other, of other cities.
Right. But wasn't there like a rationale that they're like, how, like, why are we comparing them to these specific?
Yes. So the, the reason that those were chosen is because they either, they have a lot of similarities to us. Either they're university towns or they've got electric utilities that they own. They've got, you know, similar population, those kinds of things. I mean, some are going to be high and low. And are they the geographic region? That's the other part. Cause like Austin is one that, yes, they're much, much bigger than us, but they have, they're in close proximity. So when we're losing talent, sometimes we're losing it to, to Austin. So that's, that's how they were chosen.
Thank you.
This slide shows the median home values. And as the other slide, the average there is for the state of Texas average. So the state of Texas average is 275,000 and the city of San Marcos is 285,000. And you have a low in Bryan of 216 and a high in Austin of 593,000. This next slide takes, we, we looked at all of our peer cities budget and took all of the expenditure budgets for fiscal year 24. And we use the, the Census Bureau information for population that we already covered to come up with expenditures per capita for each one of the cities. So it just shows per capita how much each city is spending. And one thing important to note is you'll see the cities with the asterisks. Those cities with the asterisk, that denotes that that city has a municipally-owned electric utility. The reason that's important is there's not a lot of cities that do, and that's part of the reason why we, we have a lot of those included in as, as a peer city for us. And those cities have another enterprise fund that other cities do not. And for us, that's about an $80 million budget. So that's a big fund. So you can see that San Marcos is at 4,300. And when, when you look at the average, it's just across all of the peer cities, it's 3,800. When you look at those cities that have a municipally-owned electric utility, it's 4,800. So we are below average in terms of what we're spending per capita to provide services to residents. Property tax and sales tax are the two primary revenue sources in the general fund. And what this shows is what our, what the budgeted property tax and sales tax is in each one of our peer cities funds. And we're, we're close to in the middle, as you can see. The average for each property tax and sales tax is $42 million. We're, we're below average on the, the blue is property tax and the gray is sales tax. So we're below average on the property tax and this is using budget. And as we discussed before, we're estimating that we're going to finish around 38, 39 million dollars in sales tax. So we'll be slightly below the average as well. And this takes the, this shows what the median household annual city property tax is. So it takes those median values that we looked at and we take the tax rate for each one of the peer cities to show what the annual city property tax bill would be. The average across just our peer cities is $1,791. And the city of San Marcos is just below the average at 1,721. Now we'll move into a section where we will discuss the investment that the fiscal year 25 budget has made in employees. Earlier on, there was a comment made about the employee engagement results. And two of those questions are shown on this slide just to, to show the, the impact that the compensation study implementation has had on the, how the employee thinks about their salary. The first was the compensation I received motivates me to perform at higher levels. When, during 22, 33% of the respondents said they strongly agree. And most recently in 24, 60% of the respondents said that they strongly agree. And with the question, my salary reflects my responsibilities. And 22, 33% again said they strongly agree. And this year, 61% said they strongly agree. So we can, we're seeing a dramatic shift in, in a positive direction on the perception of compensation among employees. Now, included in the fiscal year 25 budget is a cost of living adjustment. It's 3% for non-civil service. You see the cost of that is 1.2 million. And then there's the contractual increases for civil service of 5% and the cost of that is 1.3 million. There's also an increase to longevity and this is rewarding loyalty to employees that stay with the city longer. And you can see the associated costs with that. Also re-establishing the employee, employee home buyer assistance program. That will be $50,000. That, that program encourages employees to live in the city and be part of our community. And it also helps to generate property tax revenue. At the last, at the, at the June workshop, we, we showed a slide that had the employees, employee vacancy rate. And there was a question asked about whether or not it included retirements. So this slide is showing those same numbers adjusted for retirements. Bring your attention first, it's probably easier to see by looking at the table to the citywide number, which is the gray column bar. And you can see when you look from fiscal year 22 through 24, there's a dramatic decrease in, in the vacancy rates from 15% to 4%. When you look at, there's the non-civil service, which if you're looking at the chart is in the green, that decreased from 19 to 5% over that same time period. And the civil service, which is in the orange, also decreased from three to two. In the background, in the background, you can look at police and fire separately. You can see that police, police decreased from five to three. And fire is actually at zero at this point in the fiscal year.
There's been several people retired this year.
This one is actually adjusted for the retirements.
Including retirement?
So it's excluding retirement, yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Hard retirement.
So that is a, a lot of background information that now we'll get into the actual numbers included in the fiscal year budget. Beginning with our, in all funds look, this is for the total revenues. In total, there are 38 operating funds and the, the total revenue budget is $337 million. You, you can see on the left how much each one of the funds make up of that total amount. The, the largest operating funds in the city are the general fund, the electric fund and the water wastewater fund. Prior to talking about the expense budget, we'll take a look at inflation. And, and you can see that inflation is starting to fall from the peak that, that we hit post-COVID. It peaked at 7.7 and we're estimating that when we begin the fiscal year, that we're going to be around 3%. That is still trending higher than what we were seeing pre-COVID. Pre-COVID, it was in the one and a half to 2% range. So it's still trending higher, but much lower than what it was. So when, when we talked about the departments having to keep their budgets at the 24 levels, that is the same as a 3% decrease to their budget. Then moving on to the expense, all expenses, the expense budget is $342 million. And what this slide shows is the major categories that the expense budget falls into. So 49% is going to operating, 34% is going to personnel, 13% to debt service and 4% for one-time expenses. And that's, this is citywide, all funds. Now, starting with our largest operating fund, that's the general fund. The total revenues is $113 million. And the sales tax and property tax are the largest revenue sources. And they're, they make up 70% of the fiscal year 25 budget. And for the first time and, and at least as long as what our financial data within our system will show is sales tax and property tax are the same. Typically, sales tax is well above property tax. It's been, sales tax has been our highest revenue source. And for fiscal year 25, they're, they're about equal. On the expense side, the total expense budget is $123 million. The red is the personnel that makes up 65% of the budget. Blue is operating, making up 27% of the budget. And there's some one-time expenses that will, that we'll talk about in more detail on a later slide. So looking at our annual sales tax revenue, the, the next two slides really talk to the challenging budget year that this was. Beginning with our sales tax revenue, this shows the change year over year that we've had over the past few years. So from 22 to 23, you can see that sales tax increased by $27 million. From 23 to 24, we're estimating that sales tax will decrease $1.2 million. Within the 25 budget, there's a 1% estimate of an increase to the base. And that the flat, I'm sorry, that the outlet malls will remain flat. So overall, it's a 0.7% increase for sales tax that's included in the fiscal year 25 budget. Moving on to property tax, you can see that from 22 to 23, the, well, first, let me back up and just explain what this slide is showing. So if you look at blue, the blue is operations. And that's what the city actually can use, you know, to provide services to the community, community. The gray is for debt service. That's for the capital projects where we're repaying the debt. And the orange is for the tax increment financing. So that amount of money is restricted and it goes directly into the tax increment financing, like the downtown tours, and it has to be used for that specific purpose. Focusing on the operations piece in the blue, between 22 and 23, the amount of property tax revenue the city had in addition to operate on was $5.8 million. The following year, we had $6.8 million. Going into fiscal year 25, we had $2.1 million. fiscal year twenty-five, we had two-point-one million dollars. So, when, when you look at the, the smaller gain that, that we had on property tax this year, coupled with the decrease in sales tax, that's what made for this challenging budget year in the general This slide just provides an overview. It, it provides one year of actuals, the twenty-four budget, the twenty-four estimate, and what the proposed fiscal year twenty, twenty-five budget is. Just looking at the operating results for fiscal year twenty-four, what we budgeted to use three-point-five million dollars in twenty-four of fund balance. And as you can see, a lot of that is from one time. For twenty-four, we're estimating to only use seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand. And that's, that's even taken into consideration that decrease in sales tax revenue that, that we're estimating that we're not going to be able to meet budget on. Through the sales tax contingency plan, we've been able to identify some expenses to reduce the overall budget. So, we're estimating that we're going to finish with a fund balance of forty-two million dollars. So, that's what we'll begin fiscal year twenty-five with. And we will finish with thirty-two million. If you look at the one-time expenses, the one-time expenses are ten million dollars. If you remove those one-time expenses, the budget would be balanced. So, it is a structurally, structurally balanced budget. It's just those one-time expenses where we're using the fund balance. So, we're estimating to finish with the thirty-two million, which is a twenty-eight percent fund balance. So, it's still above our twenty-five percent target that we have. Just to update council, since we met in June on the revenue changes, there was a decrease, as you can see, in sales taxes. This was from the July sales tax. July sales tax was down eight percent or two-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars when you compare it to the same July from, from last fiscal year. Because of that, we had to update our forecast. And so, we're forecasting to finish about one-point-two million dollars lower than total sales tax collections through the fiscal year than, than what we did in the prior fiscal year. And we're forecasting to finish three-point-four million dollars short of the budget that was set for this fiscal year.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I know you've been like keeping us updated also via email with like the decreases and stuff and the updated forecast. I appreciate the explanation on like the equation and the formula that you use for that. But I followed it up with a question, like what I'm, when I'm explaining why things are a little tighter this year and the priorities that we've, the body has put forth and so on and so forth. My neighbors keep asking me why. And so, it's like, I understand, like y'all are crunching the numbers, but have y'all sat with the numbers to kind of like theorize, like why particularly compared to how like statewide things are going and other cities are? Like what, what's happening here?
Yes. So, for, for the city with sales tax, it's, we, we've shared a slide in the past. I showed our top fifteen sales taxpayers. And the biggest impact to us is our top sales taxpayer is, is where we're experiencing the, the biggest losses this year. We've, we've had communications with that company. And, you know, that company shared with us that they had two record years, the past two years for them were record years, in that they believe that they're never going to see again. And, and so, we, we believe that by the time we get to seeing the actual sales tax results for the month of January of twenty-twenty-five, that they'll stabilize by then. And so, the, the losses that we're seeing year over year will, will, should stop, and we'll start to see again. And, and there's previous, in a previous presentation too, we showed where we, if you remove the two largest losses from those sales taxpayers, and, and just look, compare twenty-three to twenty-four, we've actually gained and haven't lost. We've, I think we added a million dollars from, from the base, which is encouraging because the base is growing. It's just that when your largest sales taxpayer who last fiscal year made up ten percent of our total sales tax is experiencing significant losses, that's, that has a big impact on the city's sales tax.
It feels like we're putting a lot of our eggs in those baskets.
Yeah, yes. And, and which is why that the sales tax, sales tax contingency is sending money aside for that is so important, because it, it, it helps the city adjust to those swings that, that, that we don't really have any kind of control over.
Right.
We've been saying that since the outlet mall opened.
And we actually, I mean, we actually, and if you look at our revenue sources, our property tax is a lot closer to our sales tax than it has been in, in years past. So, there has been some making up of that. You know, before, it was always like forty-five percent was, was sales tax, and a smaller percentage was property tax. So, but it does show how one business can make such a difference. So, he talked about the largest sales taxpayer seeing record losses, you know, and, and having to not be able to make the record, you know, sales that they were making. And then, the second larger taxpayer is also had an audit finding. And so, they're having to pay some of that. And so, we don't believe that this is a long-term thing. As he talked about with the, with the highest sales taxpayer, we believe that things will rebound and start to, to, to go back up. Also, you know, Buc-E's is coming online. So, that's one thing that we can look forward to. They're saying by the end of twenty-five, you know, that it, it would be constructed. So, that'll all, that'll help us. And then, any other subsequent businesses, it just shows the, the role that commercial development does have in helping our community to be able to diversify our tax base. And that's really sales tax relief and stability when you can have more investment in your community to help offset what you would otherwise have to go to your taxpayers to say, hey, I'm going to increase your tax rate because we can't support all the infrastructure programs, services that are needed for our growing community.
We're not going to see that Buc-E's money for two years, so.
I have a couple of comments too. Being a farm kid, I follow commodity prices. And I knew as soon as I saw this number, part of what this number is coming from, from last month, the drop is, an eighty percent drop in, in, in wholesale wood sales. So, the commodity price itself dropped like a tank. And it just goes to show how important it is to diversify your economy and not just rely on one sales segment, but also a sales segment that is subject to dramatic swings in commodity prices. It's like relying on an ag product. And if you're only relying on cotton, cotton drops, you, you're, you're in real trouble. So, I, I think you're correct in that we're probably not going to see dramatic swings like this. But this is exactly why I'm in support of the contingency, is that as long as we're relying on our number-one sales tax provider is a commodity, it could get worse potentially. And, and so, it's, it's kind of an economic lesson on how commodity prices can impact even a local city budget. And I'm sure that's when we get the breakdown, and that's where the large part of this is going to come from. So, it's, yeah, it's, you're exactly right, Ms. Reyes, in that e- even industry and some other things are not subject, even though they're, they're subject to swings, nothing like you can see in a, in a market driven by commodities.
And for our citizens, this number-one sales taxpayer referring to is Mathis Lumber. And they sell lumber. I think Texas State is number ten. Was it number ten sales tax?
I, I, I don't, I don't recall what number. I know they were in the top fifteen.
But I remember like the Gucci store was like number eleven or something. So, there's some fascinating numbers.
Yeah.
I got a couple theories about Mathis Lumber. So, yes, the price of lumber has gone down, but it's gone down the past couple of years. I don't know if we've ever had conversations with them, like are some of our local housing developments, like are they securing, are they getting their lumber from local providers to help us out with sales tax? Do we have a say in that? You know, any way that we can kind of think creatively outside the box. But most of our citizens don't know. I tell them, yeah, this nondescript building off the access road nine-thirty-five, that's our largest sales taxpayer. People are blown away all the time I tell them that. Some other positive potential good news, Texas State being the tenth-largest sales taxpayer. Well, this football season, there's seven home games versus six. We get the sales tax and the concession stands there. And also, if those football games are sold out, that could be increased, you know, we're, we're talking potentially hundreds of thousands of dollars in increased sales tax. And I, you know, just for our citizens who are curious or follow sports, ESPN has recently preseason-ranked Texas State football to potentially go to the college football playoffs. So, there could be a lot of hype. Everyone get on board, get to the football stadium.
Shrew pop cat.
Cheer on our home team or our football team. It could help our sales tax.
Isn't it like an anniversary year or something?
It's a hundred, yeah, hundred-and-seventy-fifth or hundred-and-twenty-fifth, 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 yeah.
No pressure, Kelly. Make it, make it happen. Make the party happen.
Seven home games this year.
Can't you see season tickets now?
All right.
Oh, I do have a question about this one. Make sure I understand it. Okay, the sales tax, this is general revenue changes since June. So, sales tax is an actual, that's the decrease. But when we say increase of four-seventy-five from the preliminary roll, that's for FY twenty-five, right?
Yes, ma'am. And, and so is the sales tax. The, the.
That's why I was going, because it says since June. I think that's news since June as opposed to dollar amounts that have changed since June, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I figured the increase had to be the, the July twenty-fifth appraisal district report.
It was.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So, this is just intending to show how the general fund revenue sources changed since we shared the twenty-five budget with you in June.
Yes. And again, I appreciate like the, the constant updates you give us, just like via email, but, and including this where the public can kind of.
It also helps us develop like, you know, wishes and dreams, and where we like, you know, it brings some reality. Well, we have to temperament those, those decisions. Sometimes it's really based on income coming in, tax going in.
Just like at home.
People ain't got no money to spend on things. Like, come on. And, and we will be talking with council to look at, I affectionately call it the tsunami of what's going to hit us and, and when it comes to looking at things from the multi-year perspective of trying to bring on all the ARPA and all that kind of stuff, because we are keeping track of all of that. So, we will definitely make sure that you're prepared to look at what that looks like and what staff's plan is to try to make sure that we can effectively add that stuff into our base operating budget over the next several years.
What do we do for non-core after ARPA dollars are gone?
Yes. Exactly. So, we're gonna, so we are looking at that. We are mindful of it. And so, that is something that, you know, as, as, as the team, we're talking and collaborating, it's like, is this going to make things worse? Is this going to make things better? And so, that's, that's the discussion that we're having as a, as a team as we work through it all.
We got that.
Two years.
Yeah. And just, and I know I've said this before, but you got to remember, appraisals are done on January first. And you don't see that money until the next January. So, if somebody's house gets started on January second, and they move in in June, they, that was a vacant lot on January first. So, you don't see that money that June, I mean, January. It's going to be another year. But in the meantime, they've been using our parks, libraries, the school for a lot of time before we catch up with that property tax. That's why I said we're not going to see that Buc-E's money for property tax for two years. So, anyway, it's always, it's always a year behind. I know the school district knows that. It's, it's plan, catch up. Thank you.
Moving on to the changes in expenses, there's an increase in personnel, and this is just from new positions being added. And we'll cover those on a slide that's upcoming. The increase of fifty thousand dollars for re-establishing the employee homebuyer incentive, that was not in the June presentation. And there were some one-time expense increases of four-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. And we'll go over what those one-time expenses are in, in a slide that's coming up shortly. So, looking at this, the next few slides just show what the expense changes are in the fiscal twenty-five budget. This first slide covers personnel. We, we already went over the cost of living adjustment and the contractual increases for the civil and the non-civil service. Below that are the new positions that are included in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. And all of the positions on this slide are budget neutral. So, a department has either decreased their operating expenses, or was able to show that they could increase revenue in order to add each one of these positions or reclassifications to the twenty-five budget. And just as an example, if you look at the, at the plumber, the city currently contracts, you know, for plumbing services. And we're able to reduce the, the operating expense that we've been using to contract, you know, for plumbing work by more money than what it costs to just bring a plumber on, on staff for fiscal year twenty-five. So, when I refer to budget neutral, that's what that is referring to. On the next slide, it provides some new positions that were added that are not budget neutral. There's a police officer and a crime analyst. And there are also the police had a reclassification of a corporal to commander position that is included in the fiscal year twenty-five budget. There's the housing and community development manager, manager being transferred from the community development block grant to the general fund. This was one of the items that we touched on earlier in the budget policy statement. There's the code compliance officer transferred from community enhancement to the general fund. We, we also touched on that as well. There's a master technician being added for emergency vehicle. It's emergency vehicle technician. So, this is a, this is a fleet technician that has special certification to be able to work on public safety vehicles, specifically fire vehicles is what this is for because of how technical those vehicles are. And the reclassification of a legal assistant as well.
Question. Ms. Reyes, I thought you said two police officers when you gave your intro.
Yes, it will be two police officers per year. However, this actually, the, the chief has said that he wants to have a crime analyst because that was something that we had already done. So, that's how, that's how we chose to do it this time. And also, we're doing the reclassification of the corporal to a commander, because we have one commander right now that is working. So, so that, that's the reason why. But going forward, it will be two police officers per year.
Okay. How many crime analysts do we have now? Do we have, do we have two or three?
I believe we have two.
Okay.
I believe we have two.
Sorry. The grant that was item number nineteen on consent authorized as another FTE full-time employee. So, that will be the second police officer for this fiscal year that you're proposed.
How many crime analysts do we have now?
With this, three.
Okay. So, this will be four?
This is three.
So, we have two now.
No, we have three currently, because it's such a long hiring process. We are now catching up with something that we have already implemented. So, we froze positions on professional staff, what some people call civilians, I call professional staff. We froze some positions so we could move forward with the tactical analyst to assist CID, because the need is already there. So, we moved forward with frozen positions. Now, we need to unfreeze the positions and correctly classify in the budget this third analyst.
This multi-year public safety staffing plan, just, this is something that we went over during the June meeting. And it's just celebrating the success of reaching the goals that we set for both police and fire initially. For police, the, our initial goal was to hit the twenty-twenty-one recommendation of adding the ten new officers. And with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget, there'll be a total of a hundred-and-twenty-five. The goal from the twenty-twenty-one study was a hundred-and-twenty-two. So, we will have met that goal.
Do we do another study? Because we've added like sixteen thousand people since that study.
Yes, I, very true. And both the fire chief and police chief would, would both share that with you, that in, and if you look at the fire chief, that was a twenty-twenty study.
Yeah. Okay.
And on, for the, for that twenty-twenty study, it recommended adding twenty-seven new firefighters. The amount included in the twenty-twenty-five budget is ninety. If we are awarded the safer grant, then that would give us a hundred-and-five. And, and And, and then we would be, um, above the, um, that original goal from the twenty-twenty study of a hundred and two. And the, the next slide just reiterates that path forward for public safety staffing on the fire side, adding the two firefighters every year. Um, at the end of the safer grant, which is a three-year period. And for police, adding two police officers every year as well as a nine-one-one teller communicator. And for the city marshal, as Ms. Reyes pointed out, um, we have a staffing study that's currently underway for, for the city marshal's office. So, other cost drivers not related to personnel, the citywide body camera agreement increased by four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. And the municipal court lease, the current lease is for ninety-two thousand, we included an additional two hundred and twenty-one thousand to, um, to make sure that there's enough funding there, uh, for the new municipal court lease. And if there's any kind of overlap where we might be having to pay lease for, at both places, there's funding in the budget for that. This slide shows the one-time expenses. The Hopkins redevelopment future city hall project, uh, is four million dollars. So, what this slide is showing is the fund balance in excess of twenty-five percent, what that's being allocated towards. The Hopkins redevelopment future city hall project is four million dollars. The fiscal year twenty-twenty-five capital outlay is one point eight million dollars. And, uh, about eight hundred thousand of that is to make up for the, um, departments that weren't able to get their capital outlay during the current fiscal year. Because that, that was frozen as part of the sales tax contingency plan. The municipal court relocation, there is funding set aside for that, um, that is currently in negotiations. We're replacing eight patrol vehicles for six hundred thousand dollars. And there's fit, the fiscal year twenty-five CIP, there's four hundred and twenty-six thousand set aside, uh, to cash fund some CIP. And that brings us to our decision points for the general fund.
Okay, can we go back to those slides? Yes, that one. So, council, this is direction that staff is asking us to give them. And, uh, I can ask you, I'm gonna ask you about each of those, but if you're good with all of them, you can just say, I'm good with all of them. And just let me know who wants to go first. Okay.
I'm good with all of them too, ma'am.
Alrighty.
Ma'am, I'm good with them as well.
All right. Others? You wanna say that in the microphone with it on?
Oh, I'm fine with it, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Scott?
I'm good with all of them.
Ms. Garza?
I'm never content. My vote doesn't matter, I guess, yes, whatever, I don't.
And, and I am also. Okay. Next.
And just if there's other direction for staff, uh, as it relates to the general fund.
Find more money.
You know, that, that's something I keep saying, that we're, we're not, other than utilities, we're not good at going out and capturing the dollars. But we're pretty good at spending it, so I, I think we need to keep up with things or, anyway, y'all know. Let's continue.
The only other thing I have is, um, thanks to all the directors for coming up with all this and collaborating and giving and taking. And I know this isn't easy and, um, and you guys have done a great job through COVID and through, um, potential little downturn this year. And there's a lot of work to be had and, and, uh, this is, it's good, it's good stuff.
This is just.
Mr. Locke, we're lucky to have you.
This is the, in the general fund, I was gonna do the big thank you at the end of all the funds.
Well, I just wanted to get the general fund out of the way because I know that's the one where a lot of the directors, that's where their budgets are coming from, so. Um, and, and, and can, and thanks to Mr. Locke too, so this is the big one.
And, and like I, I mentioned before, looking at next year is really tough when you're looking at a three million dollar-ish loss this year for projects you thought you could do and can't, and then you're looking at, oh, can't make it up next year, so.
And trying to be visionary at the same time.
Yeah. Let's go on to the next one.
So, now we'll go into special revenue funds, there are two special revenue funds that we're going to.
It's nine o'clock, if we can get a break before we start into special revenues.
We can. We'll take a break, it's nine oh-two, please be ready to start the meeting at nine-ten. Oh, no. It is nine-twelve, and we will continue with special revenue funds, I believe.
First, the first fund is our hotel tax fund. And the total revenues in the hotel tax fund is four point four million dollars. And, uh, the, the chart there shows how the revenue is broke up, the primary revenue source is from the hotel tax, that's the seven percent portion. You also see the venue tax makes up twenty-two percent, and that's the portion that is used to retire the conference center debt. There's also a transfer from the general fund, and that transfer is used to cover a portion of the main street program that is funded out of the hotel tax fund. On the expense side, fifty-five percent of the expenses is, are operating expenses and twenty-four percent one-time. And personnel makes up the smallest, uh, twenty-one percent of total cost in the twenty-five budget. The next slide, uh, provides that overview from twenty-three to the proposed twenty-five. Uh, we're estimating that we're gonna finish fiscal year twenty-four, uh, using four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars of fund balance. Uh, that being, um, one-time expenses. If you look to the left, um, for the, what we budgeted, we estimated we were gonna use six hundred and seventy-four thousand of fund balance. So, we're using less than what we thought we were going to use. Uh, to the right, um, you can see, well, we're gonna start with three point five million dollars of fund balance and potentially end with one point seven million. I, I wanna draw your attention to where you see the one-time for one point four million. All of that probably won't be spent, and we'll cover that on a slide that is coming up. The fund balance requirement is twenty-five percent in this fund. And even if we did spend all of that money, we would finish with a thirty-six percent fund balance. The next slide shows the revenue assumptions. The hotel taxes, um, our original estimate is that they, they were gonna be flat, that we weren't going to estimate an increase. Given the embassy suite remodel, we, um, decided to estimate even more conservative. And, uh, that, that remodel will take place from November of twenty-four through July of twenty-five. So, we're estimating that both the, the hotel tax, the seven percent portion and two percent portion will be around a ten or eleven percent decrease from the current estimated fiscal year. That's what's included in the twenty-five budget. On the expense side, uh, the, the cost drivers in the fund, you have the personnel increases. We also have the downtown ground specialist that was added. That is going to be funded with ARPA funds, um, until the end of the, um, uh, till the ARPA funding ends. Looking down at the bottom at the one-time expenses, the wayfinding second phase, that's five hundred thousand dollars. And I, I mentioned that, um, may not be spent, that's the permanent arts and the mural arts. Uh, the, that amount of money is, um, every year there's some money budgeted for, um, grants to the arts. And the, uh, the money that's not spent for that purpose is moved into the permanent arts and mural arts. And it's saved up for, um, a, a big, um, art, permanent art or mural art that, that the city may fund. So, um, that amount may not be spent, it's just reserved within that fund balance.
Do you say we spend half a million dollar on art for the city?
No, sir, no, I.
That's what it looks like on the thing, permanent art is forty-nine.
That, that's just the amount that's reserved for that purpose. It, uh, more than likely will not be spent during the year, but of our fund balance, we reserve that amount. And so, it's just included in the, in the budget, so if a permanent art project did come up during the year, it would come from this four hundred and twenty-nine thousand that is reserved for that purpose.
Why do we reserve so much?
That's a lot of money to hold aside just for art.
In this economy, you're, I mean, it's just gonna come just.
But this is hotel tax, which has got a lot of restrictions.
Right?
Yes.
Art's expensive, I guess, hey, I like art, I'm just saying, in this economy.
And I, I also wanted to point out the historical restoration and preservation. The historical restoration and preservation that's being set aside is four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. That's included in that one-time expense.
That's the new thing, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next, uh, special revenue funds, community enhancement fund. And the first slide, the assistant city man, manager Rodney Gonzalez is gonna cover the first slide.
Getting this, there it is, speaker button, thank you, John, we appreciate it. Um, so I understand that the previous goal from council was for us to look at ways to utilize community enhancement fee better. Specifically use it for projects more so than for operations. And so, what we've done is, uh, City Manager Reyes has assigned myself and Hayden Meagle to work with the team of departments to do just that. Um, and so, our first strategy is to shift the, the funding for one code or code enforcement officer from being funded from community enhancement to the general fund. So, that's gonna be pretty significant, that way we get to use more of that money for projects. Um, the other thing too, and this goes along with just, uh, the method of how we're gonna be doing our community enhancement. We feel that design guide is needed that will guide the way that we do our plantings, the types of planting so that way we get more uniform, uh, types of projects versus a hodgepodge, if you will, of different projects. Um, and then with regard to find more money now, we did that with this, uh, particular project. Um, what we've done is staff has put together a mowing map through GIS. And in that mowing map, we did find that we were actually, uh, mowing some private properties that they should be doing on their own. And so, we're ceasing that. Um, and of course, you know, we're talking to those private properties, letting them know that, um, we had been inadvertently doing that and that we're ceasing that. But that's one way that we found money, uh, that we were spending that now goes towards city projects instead. So, we're gonna, um, continue to update the mowing map, um, uh, on a regular cadence. Um, so that way, we ensure that we are mowing, mowing only those city properties that need to be mowed. Yes, ma'am?
And on the design guide, I, I did ask, and, and y'all said yes, that we're gonna be talking about low maintenance?
Absolutely.
Natural native whatever, low, low maintenance plants?
All of that, the, the plants that, that thrive in this type of arid environment without a lot of water and without a lot of, uh, physical maintenance as well, that's one way that we're gonna save dollars as well.
One of the most important things, and there've been many important things said from that podium, and I don't, it was not a staff member. But the guy says, and how much time and money can you allocate towards maintenance of this project? Which we didn't always take into consideration, we'd go put in some that looked fabulous and, and he, two years later, it didn't look so fabulous, so.
Yeah, exactly, and then that's not where we want to be as a city, we want to make sure that what we put in in day one, that we're continuously maintaining.
Like crate myrtles.
You hit it on the head, because when you come into San Marcos there on the eighty, that whole area that's supposed to be nice looking, looks like a jungle. You can't even see what's there, there's gonna be bums in there for all you know.
Okay. Are you talking about where City Hall is gonna go?
Huh?
No, he's talking about right.
Right, the intersection.
Or San Mar Plaza.
Oh, the text dot thingy that, yeah.
I mean, this is, this is a pet peeve, this is, um, I wanted to be very hyper-focused on this. I've, I've like, you know, we can't say that we're using the community enhancement fee if people aren't seeing and our city's not looking that visibly kept.
Was the origination.
So, that is why, um, you know, I, I put some, put some, uh, focus on it by assigning two, uh, great people to be able to work with the team of people and try to address it. And so, um, yes, we're gonna look at low maintenance, um, things that are maybe flowering natives and things that, that don't look like weeds, you know, when they grow out.
Thank you.
And things like that, so that's, that's stuff that we're looking at. Also, using GIS tools to really help us and define, okay, these are the areas we're gonna tackle, you know, to try to make sure that we're making, um, some visible strides. So, I have full confidence in, um, Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Meagle in working with the team to try to make sure that we're getting those pattern books and having some consistency. Um, and then also looking at maintenance for when we do projects.
Yeah, if, if you haven't been down there lately, craddock median between old and new Ranch Road twelves.
We will take a look.
We spent the entire budget of community enhancement fee on that.
Okay.
In the beginning.
Oh, wow, we will take a look.
Yeah.
Uh, last bullet point is, uh, of course, with this, we're gonna develop ma, maintenance standards. We know that there are different, um, pieces of city property that do need to be maintained at different schedules. Whether that's rights of way or corridors or gateways. Again, we want to make sure that we're addressing those key points where residents are looking and making sure that we're constantly maintaining those to where we are keeping our city beautiful. And through the GIS map and through the mowing standards, we'll be able to achieve that. So, with that, I will hand it back over to John.
The next slide, um, shows total revenues and total expenses in the community enhancement fund. The total revenue budget is one point one million, and as you can see, it all comes from the, the fee itself. And the total expenses is also one point one million with sixty-three percent of that budget going towards operating expenses and the remaining thirty-seven, uh, towards personnel. This is, the next slide is a look at what the fund balance will be in, in the fund, uh, as we end twenty-four and go into twenty-five. We're estimating to, uh, begin with the seven hundred and forty-six thousand dollar fund balance and, uh, bring in nineteen thousand dollars more money than what is budgeted to be spent. Uh, so we'll add a little bit to fund balance. And, and this is due to transit, moving one of those compliance officers out into the general fund. If that compliance officer was still there, we would actually be using sixty-six thousand dollars of fund balance just to, to, to fund community enhancement program. So, we, we would finish with a fund balance percent of seventy-two percent, um, which, with the, um, seven hundred and, or I'm sorry. It's too small for me. Uh, seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars.
Do we have a set fund percentage we want to keep in that fund? Did we, did we reset that of fund minimum, fund balance minimum?
Yeah, we, we set it for sixty days, which is roughly about seventeen percent. And, and that is, um, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars.
I'll see it at the bottom line here.
Yeah, fair bottom.
Completely missed it, looking at it. Thank you.
Yeah. Looking at the major, uh, revenues and cost drivers in the fund, there is no proposed fee increase in the community enhancement fund. Um, all the growth, or the, the revenue increase you see there is just from the assumed growth, uh, from accounts and from the city growing. On the cost side, you have the three percent increase for personnel. Uh, and the, the biggest change there is just the decrease from transferring the one code compliance officer to the general fund. That saved eighty-five thousand dollars in this fund. And the biggest increase is the mowing services increased by eighty-two thousand dollars. And, um, we are planning to bid this out in the upcoming year to have that ready for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Uh, and the next slide is the decision point slide. Um, it, just asking if you agree with, uh, the staff recommendations as we went through the special revenue funds and if you have any other direction for staff.
Counsel, we all good? Good, yeah.
Only, I'm, I'm fine with it, the only thing I would suggest is with the dollar amount being so low on this fund, maybe look at increasing that sixty-day to ninety-day to give you a little additional. If a, if a flood project, if something happens with flooding or we have some sort of an incident where we need to spend some additional community and, and, and funds from the community enhancement, that you might want to have an extra little bit reserve in there. It's not a large amount of money, but that's what I would suggest is that we increase the reserve there a little bit.
For FY twenty-five or work towards that?
But I would be something that I would.
Well, we're at seventy-two, so we're halfway there.
We already, there's a bunch extra there now, but just codifying the verbiage of keeping more than sixty days and maybe keeping a ninety-day operation.
I'm just still waiting for it to get all the light fixtures on Wonder World Bridge the same.
And, uh, and that change is something we can bring back at the next polit, budget policy, uh, for next year is to, to increase that.
Alrighty, that sounds good, so we're good to go on to the next item.
And, and the next item is gonna start the enterprise funds. Uh, the first slide in the enterprise funds, uh, we have Dan Wegmiller, um, that council is, is aware of from specialized public finance. And he's gonna talk about electric and waterways. from Specialized Public Finance, and he's going to talk about electric and water wastewater and their bond rating.
Thank you, John. Mayor, council, Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. The quick points on this slide is your utility funds, specifically electric, water, and wastewater, kind of there's a base to work from. When you go to borrow money against those funds for major capital projects, you create bond covenants. Those are the bond documents that you're contract with who's buying your bonds on certain things you're going to do to maintain the integrity of that system. That flows into your rate setting mechanism. Those covenants, including your fund balance, which is current city policy of 90-day cash on hand with a goal of 120-day cash on hand. And then the other part of that rate setting mechanism is debt service coverage. Debt service coverage sets a minimum amount of revenue that your rate should produce to cover any debt that you have outstanding. So the legal minimum per the covenant is 1.2. A healthy level is 1.4 to 1.5, but also stronger than that is 1.5 and above. One thing to note, as it shows on the right-hand side, the consistency of review and consideration of any changes or recommendations create trends. And you're judged in the credit markets by the rating agencies, and what they want to see is trend lines. They want to see consistent coverage. So you can operate under a healthy level of coverage or even just at a healthy level if you show that trend line and what they call is a willingness to pay or setting the rates and charges year over year necessary to also look forward. Like you, like your citizens and the staff as well, looking at setting smaller rate increases or changes over time is often viewed as a positive and it's less painful to absorb than like large shocks to that system. The other thing I was going to mention related to that is that legislative efforts, you all historically have used certificates of obligations to sell, to support a lot of these funds. There have been legislative efforts in the past to take away COs and force you to go the revenue route. That would create, if you don't have this base looking forward in those funds, if you were forced to do that even by a legislative movement, it would come with some struggles to those systems. So that's kind of an overview of what that baseline comes from through these covenants.
And from there, we'll go into the largest enterprise fund, and that's our electric utility fund. The total revenues in the '25 budget is just over $81 million. And the majority of that is from the electric utility bills, as you see, 92% with the remaining 8% coming from other sources. On the expense side, the '25 budget is just under $80 million. 78% of that amount is operating expenses, 12% personnel, 9% debt service, and the remaining 1% is for one-time expenses. This next slide provides an overview of the '24 budget and estimate and the proposed '25 as well as where we're going to be at from a fund balance perspective. We budgeted to use 1.1 million dollars of fund balance. And with that being one-time expense, we're estimating to actually finish $6 million more revenue than expense. We'll actually add to fund balance. I wanted to spend a little bit of time talking about that. And so if you look at the other revenue, you'll see that other revenue has just under $16 million that we're estimating in '24 with a large amount of that wasn't budgeted. Some history on that, there was a rate stabilization fund that was created in 2019. The funding that was used to create this was through an annual reconciliation process with the city's power provider, the Lower Colorado River Authority. So each year, any time that that reconciliation was positive, money was moved into this rate stabilization fund. The way that the rate stabilization fund was set up, it doesn't, the amount of money that's there isn't able to be included in the city's fund balance. So that's the change that we want to make. If you look in fiscal year '24, that revenue being recognized and flowing through is what's creating that $6 million to the good. And it's how we are finishing at $23 million. It's taking that money that's been set aside from 2019 over several years that's built up and moving that into the fund balance of the electric fund. And that's how we would finish at 23.
Was that in our policy statement? Is that where the change is? Are you going to change this up? Is it in our policy statement?
This actually was not in the budget policy statement. This is something that, you know, between Mr. Yorth and the city manager's office and finance, we have discussed on how to address this. You know, and really, we started to talk about this after the electric fund was downgraded. And, you know, one of the things that, one of the reasons that the rating analyst gave us was that we didn't have a healthy enough fund balance. And so we have this money sitting there that we're not getting credit for. So by moving it over and treating it like this, then we still have that fund balance. Now we get to treat it as our fund balance and it shows up as, you know, like for instance, for fiscal year '24, we would finish with a $24.9 million fund balance, 113 days of cash on hand. Without making this change, we would be at $17.4 million, 79 days cash on hand. So that's the difference of treating this stabilization fund in this manner, making this change will have on the electric.
You know, these are the kind of things that just a simple policy change where you're moving money over to where you can get credit for it from the credit agencies, the rating agencies, make a huge difference. So I don't know which one of staff gets the most credit for this, but that's a huge deal to change that up. And it's money we were already receiving. We just weren't getting credit from it from the credit rating agencies. So good job to staff on that.
So that's a change for this year, and that's bumped up our days of cash on hand.
Yes, ma'am. It's just, it's a one-time influx and that money will stay there. It'll be our cash on hand.
Okay. Kudos to whomever.
Yeah, it was certainly a collaborative effort between all those people that I just mentioned. This next slide has the Citizens Utility Advisory Board recommendations. Before I read through these recommendations, I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that members of the QAB are present this evening and they're available to discuss the recommended rate increases if council has any questions of them. For the electric fund, the recommendation was a 5.5% effective rate adjustment. And the recommendation is to continue with the smaller annual increases until all the financial targets are met and that the annual trends are starting to look upward and the city is in a stronger financial position. The, it's interesting that you mentioned Mr. Gleason, the, if it was in the policy, because that is one of the things that staff is going to work on with the QAB, and that is providing a utility financial policy to the QAB. And then ultimately, that would come to city council as well. So some of the items that this financial policy would outline is establishing the foundation outline for increasing and maintaining credit rating standards and structurally defining what the electric rates, how they're set. And we're proposing, and we're, the goal for this is to have it ready by the visioning session for council for 2025.
And that's the kind of stuff that rating agencies look at too, right? Like any of those little policy things are so critical. And so, thanks for all the QAB volunteers and, but understanding that having a policy in place where you're making incremental increases, that you can turn that into the rating agencies, what kind of impact that has on our rating in general. So, and I can't, this is the kind of stuff that I'm glad we have you here, Mr. Locke, that these are all policies that they don't really necessarily sit to the cracks, but just need fine details. And of course, Mr. Wade Miller, for all the advice he's always given our city to keep our ratings, rates up, our rating in the shape that it's in. So these are the kind of policy changes I love to see that have a long-term ramification financially to the city.
And I just wanted to add, I can't take all the credit for that. Mr. Yorth has had a big part of this too. It's been a collaborative effort, for sure.
Yeah, we're lucky to have Mr. Horth around too.
The next slide provides the utility rating report that we received in September of '22. This is actually when the city was downgraded from an A- to a triple B+. And I kind of touched on it. One of the items that the rating analysts provided was that utilities that operate within the ERCOT environment need a greater fund balance than others to navigate the volatility that they perceive is in this ERCOT environment and the ERCOT market. For that reason, for the electric fund, we're estimating that the fund balance is probably, is going to need to be between 150 and 180 days of fund balance.
Is that a change from the rating agencies? Is that something that happened potentially since the Great Freeze? Or is that something that they've always done with?
No, they modify at least every couple of years, two or three years, their criteria and their standards. And so this is an evolution through a lot of the events that they see both the deregulation and then the storm environment. So it's, they adjust as they see conditions.
Just because of the potential volatility, because it's just not as large of grid, I guess, but, okay. That's interesting. Thank you.
The next slide provides an outlook. And it, what it shows is the, an estimated rate increase that it would take to increase the city's days of cash on hand as well as the debt service coverage ratio. So if you look at the bottom, under where it says ending fund balance, where it says effective rate, total bill percent impact. For fiscal year '25, the recommended amount is 5.5. As you move to the right, you can see that it's 2.9, 2.7, 1.2, 0.8. Those are those, you know, smaller incremental adjustments. And you can see the impact that that would have. You see our days on cash on hand would actually be at 150 by the time we would get to fiscal year '29. And that debt service coverage ratio would be at 1.4, which is in that healthy range that Mr. Wegmiller shared earlier.
Is that something you're going to have QAB review every year?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And one thing just to point out for fiscal year '25, as you can see, we're estimating that we'd be at a 1.21, which is above that legal minimum amount. The next slide is the, just a graphical representation of the numbers that we went over. So I'll just skip over that slide. And this is the five-year target. This is what, this is our goal. We'd really like to see the electric utility rating be back at, or be at a double A. And that's the same rating that the city's water wastewater fund and general fund has. So it would be at the same standing. So this is what the rate adjustment looks like compared to our peers that we compare ourselves toward. Currently, the current is in blue. It shows what the current rate amount is for someone using 500 kilowatt hours, 1,000 and 1,500, as you can see. And so with the proposed adjustment, it doesn't really change where we are in terms of how we compare amongst our peers.
And on this comparison, there's a lot of this cost savings, I'd go to say, to our peer cities or peer providers here. How much does the Ferguson plant have to do with that?
The Ferguson plant has had an impact on, that is actually something that Mr. Yorth and I was looking at. Like, when you look at the Ferguson plant since we made the initial investment, I think it's had a net impact of around $2.5 million of positive revenue that is brought in.
Since the initial investment?
Yes, sir.
And when was that? Do we know?
2013.
13?
They were here.
But those are the kind of things too of being, you know, kind of visionary of what potential opportunities might come up to. We'd be very open to those discussions of what else we might be able to get ourselves into if we, I know, taken some money potentially from this reserve fund to solidifying us with more assets or things that could provide additional revenue that we could turn into the rating agencies too, that, you know, whatever Mr. Horth might come up with of collaboration with something else to invest in the future, basically. So I'm still astounded that the council at that time had the vision to do that and with the kind of help it gave us during the storm, but also just having that asset and extra money. I know you're down there.
Don't ever sit in here.
But that did take some vision to spend that money and invest in that.
This slide shows the impact to the commercial. You can see that the city is currently the lowest and even with the proposed adjustment would still be the lowest amongst those different users. The next slide has the electric utility rate history. And really what is outlined are just the years where there was a rate adjustment made. And so the, and within this time span, '22, '24, and what is being proposed in '25. Those are the only rate adjustments since fiscal year '16.
Which, to connect the dots, that we're not doing slow as you go if you're putting no rate increases. So that has created some rate pressures to where now we are having to say there needs to be some increases.
And looking at the revenue changes on electric fund, the QAB's recommendation of 5.5 would generate $4.6 million of revenue in the electric fund. On the expense side, the major, some of the major cost drivers, we have one new position being added, and that's the utility safety position. Looking at the one-time expenses, for $612,000, you have four large equipment replacements. These are, this is equipment the city already owns that has hit the end of useful life that we're replacing. You see it's a bucket truck, gas monitors, warehouse forklift, and then heavy-duty lift. And then new debt service that was issued during the current fiscal year that'll come online next year is $441,000. This next slide shows what the electric service rate options are. What it shows is the first row is the debt service ratio. And the legal minimum being a 1.2, the healthy is the 1.4. It shows the effective rate needed to reach each one of those target. So what the recommendation from QAB is, is the lower amount, which is that 5.5%. And the impact to the typical residential rate payer is that $6.97. As you move to the right, if we wanted to go all the way to 1.4, that would be a 7.6% increase and the impact would be $9.41. The recommendation from QAB and staff is for the 5.5% effective rate increase adjustment. And that would get us to that minimum 1.2. And that will take us to the decision point slide for electric.
Thank you for QAB for diving into this and providing the details and for your time on this effort. And, you know, I think the best way to go about this is, you know, raise our rates slow over time so we're not having that rate shock on our citizens. But yeah, I'm okay with everything that's being presented, the 5.5% increase.
I also want to say thank you to the Citizens Utility Advisory Board. I was actually there, well, first off, I want to say thank you for showing up here. It means a lot that you're humanizing what you guys did. And I was fortunate to be there during this meeting, and their decision was not lightly. I mean, they took this very serious. They sat there and they had some good discussions and they just basically realized that this was, what they felt was the best move. So I want to say thank you for just really doing some great discussion and taking your responsibilities very seriously. So thank you very much.
Are you all good with this? Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm all good. And I just want to throw out too that this is one of the... And I just want to throw out too that, um, this is one of the more complicated things we do. I don't think people quite realize we're not just running a city, we're running an electric utility. And you're asking council members who have probably no background in any capacity of what, you know, what all this is. And to, this, it's difficult to raise fees on, on everybody, right? Like, this is, it's not an easy thing to do, say, we're going to increase your rates. But I believe in locally owned municipal utilities. I think overall, it's a huge benefit to the community and it's something I want to see, um, run properly for the long term. And, uh, this takes a ton of work. And thank you for staff and everybody that makes, makes our own utility work here. And, uh, and to the community, I, it's, it's an added burden to staff and to the council members to try to, uh, understand this and digest it and try to make, um, decisions for the future. So, um, and, uh, so thank you for everybody for QAB and putting the time and energy into this. And I hate to raise everybody's rates, but it's, it's needed. It has to happen or our rating is going to continue to go down, which is going to add costs and put the utility at risk. And so, um, I don't take it lightly, but thanks for everybody for, for putting the work in on this. This one's complicated.
I had asked for, oh, sorry, was somebody else going to speak? I had asked for this in the past, I think several of us had to, I feel like when we're talking about increases to rates, it's like really important for us to also have that conversation simultaneous to like, what are disconnections looking like? Like, what's the average amount of, um, uh, negative, um, balance that folks get cut off on? We've heard a lot of, um, interesting community feedback about inconsistencies and like their, um, like how they navigate that. And so, and we've, we've brought that to city managers' attention. Yeah, so it's, 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 I'm going to vote no, I'm always going to vote no. Copy and paste my, my first commentary from the first time we talked about rate increases, just so I don't take up any more time. But I do think when we talk about an equity lens, when we're talking about increases, we should be also talking about the realities of folks navigating those payments.
So when we get further, a little bit, if he can get through the utilities, then we, we heard you and we heard the council. So Griselle has done that high-level look at the utility assistance. And we have some observations and some recommendations. So that will be in this presentation that will be addressed. Because, yes, I mean, and, and that's the deal, is that it, it ends up being that somebody is still paying and it puts the pressure on the other people that are paying if you don't raise rates. So we've got to figure out a way to do that or we can't effectively provide the service. So that's.
Did I miss it? Cause I asked specifically for the information about like disconnections and like da-da-da-da-da.
Disconnects or not disconnects, what, what, what I, what we, we didn't hear that. What I, what we heard was, cause we all repeat our notes and so we can go back and look. But what we heard was, do you have somebody who really looks at things from more of a program evaluation and efficacy of the programs for utility assistance? And so that was the conversation. And so we said that we could have Griselle look at that. And so she did look at it from a, um, efficacy in regard to our utility assistance. And that's what was requested. And so that's what we're bringing forward.
I just think it's interesting that you'd provide information on resource navigation without a snapshot of the need. I feel like that is kind of, uh, intuitive, but whatever.
Mr. Scott? You're a no. You what? Uh, I'm asking about the five point five percent increase in the electric. You're good with that? Okay. All right, so we're good with that? We're good to go?
Okay. That, that'll take us to the water wastewater utility fund. And, uh, the, this first chart shows total revenues in twenty-five budget, sixty-nine million dollars. And almost all of that revenue comes from the water and wastewater utility bills, the money that's collected for the, um, use of water and wastewater. On the expense side, uh, total expenses is sixty-seven million dollars. And that is broken up with sixty-four percent of that budget being operating, twenty-two percent debt service, thirteen percent personnel, and one percent for one-time expenses in the twenty-five budget. This slot, yes, sir?
Our reclaimed water, is that already affected? That we're already selling the reclaimed water?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we've been doing that since the nineties.
And, uh, how's that paying off? Is it?
I, I, I don't have the numbers on just the reclaimed water.
But it is working.
We would have anything that, uh, something that, um, I can follow up with.
Yeah, that's fine.
And you, you also have sold water to neighboring communities and, and folks that are needing. So we are trying to figure out how we can try to help the funds by using outside resources and not having to ask our ratepayers.
The big thing on reclaimed water is that they're using reclaimed water, not freshwater, in order to keep, um, the amount of freshwater that's going out less.
Yeah, I, I just.
Water conservation efforts.
I just remembered that we're going to be selling water and trying to keep us from raising our rates.
I don't think it was to keep us from raising our rates, it was to make sure that we're using.
Well, there's some water we rebought and we're going to resell and, and hopefully we're going to make some money out of it.
For some folks that are using it, using water, and then they use reclaimed water and we, they keep buying reclaimed water because that's what they need, that's helpful. I, I don't know.
Thank you.
So, uh, looking at the fiscal year twenty-four, uh, estimate for water wastewater, we are estimating to, to finish with a fund balance of twenty-three point four million, um, which will carry over to twenty-five. You have the budgeted revenues and expenses. And we would, estimating to finish that twenty-five million dollars in water wastewater, which, that would give us a hundred and thirty-six days of cash on hand. The current requirement is ninety days. And, and this fund, the, um, target is a hundred and twenty days to, to move it to a hundred and twenty days. So if we hit that amount, then we would have some, um, money that we'd be able to use to cash fund one-time projects. And that takes us to the QAB's recommendation for water wastewater. The recommendation is for a five percent rate adjustment in both water and wastewater. And, um, they, uh, there's, um, a, a similar, um, bullets there as what we went over in the electric fund.
So it's, this says for, for both, but it's really each?
Yeah, so it'd be.
Both would be together?
Yes, ma'am. For the clarification, it'd be five percent water and five percent wastewater.
Okay, and are we at our decision points yet or we're almost there?
Not, not yet. Um, we, uh, this just shows that this is some good news in that the last time that we had a rating on the water wastewater, we were upgraded from double A minus to a double A. And that's the same rating that the general fund holds, that's a really strong rating. So, so that's good news. And that was in July of twenty-twenty-three. And just to share a site that the analyst said is the city's willingness to examine rates annually and a strong fund balance. Those were, um, two of the things that, uh, reasons that they used where they upgraded the city. Then that takes us to the outlook. Uh, this is similar to the electric. And so it, what, what it shows is the amount of a rate increase that it would take as you move, um, to the right and what kind of days cash on hand that, that would give. Some of that money would, would be used for one-time, um, expenses to cash fund, um, some of the capital projects that they have in water wastewater so they don't have to issue as much debt. Um, and then you, you can see what the goal is, trying to move closer to that one point four debt service coverage ratio. And we would be at one point three-five under this scenario by the time we got to fiscal year twenty-nine. And, um, the rates as proposed, as you can see, were at that legal minimum, the one point two. This is just a graphical representation of that, uh, previous slide, so I'll skip over that. And it takes us to the rate comparisons, um, against our peer cities. So you can see where we're at currently in blue. And after the rate adjustment, um, we would move up one, um, ahead of Sagan. And this is for the, uh, average residential five thousand gallon user.
How much does this take into account potential, um, additional debt service from ARWA?
That is, um, included, the, the additional, the, from the most recent issuance, the one point one million is included in the fiscal year twenty-five budget.
Okay. And then projections of potential expansions or anything, has any of that been looked at at all from ARWA? Any, anything else?
The, um, additional ARWA debt that you'll, that we saw in the budget this year, interest only, which was the last, uh, uh, monies that we approved, uh, for them to take debt on for our behalf. Uh, that is in here. Uh, that gets us, um, uh, into the one C, one D expansion that you're familiar with. The next phase of that is the phase two debt. And that's still contemplated and, and is twenty-thirty, twenty-thirty-four. So this number will include what we currently have on the books for the, uh, completing all of phase one, plus that first expansion.
And I hadn't heard that twenty-thirty year, I don't think yet, so I, and that's, so that's, it, it's past these projections in five.
It's past the five-year projection. So whether we hit it in twenty-thirty or twenty-thirty-five, it's, it's, it's not within the rate model scope yet.
Okay, thank you.
The, the next slide shows what it would be for a ten thousand gallon user. And as you see, the city is closer to the top and, and that's by design. That's to try and encourage conservation. Um, so that before and after the event, uh, or the, uh, proposed rate adjustment, it doesn't move the city compared to our peer cities. And then the, then we move into the commercial. And for a fifty thousand gallon user, you see the current, uh, where the city is and with the proposed, where that would take us. And then there's one more rate comparison for a commercial hundred thousand gallon user. And it's a similar thing with the current and where we would be with the proposed on the commercial side. The next slide, uh, provides the utility rate history. What's actually outlined in here is the year that there wasn't a recommended rate adjustment. So there was no rate adjustment in fiscal year twenty-three. This fund has made, um, kept up with this, um, more of the smaller annual adjustments year over year. So the five percent, um, recommendation from the QAB would generate two point eight million dollars in the water wastewater fund. And the major expense changes, uh, the, the biggest part is in the operating. And this is, um, when the operating, um, contracts that we have for the wastewater treatment plant and the surface water treatment plant, you can see the amount that those agreements are estimated to increase in fiscal year twenty-five, as well as the ARWA plant. There are some one-time expenses budgeted for some large equipment replacements, a total eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand. And then the new debt service that is issued during this current fiscal year for the capital improvement program will come online in fiscal year twenty-five and that amount is five hundred and sixty-five thousand. Then, uh, that takes us to one of those similar slides that we ended with, with electric, just the different options. To, um, if you were going to go all the way to get to that healthier debt service coverage ratio of one point four, it would take a ten percent adjustment. What the QAB and what staff has recommended is, is to get, to maintain that legal amount, which is the one point two. It requires a five percent adjustment and the impact to the, um, residential rate payer is five dollars and twenty cents a month. And that does take us to the, uh, decision points.
Okay, council, that, which is basically the five percent for each?
Yes, ma'am.
For the water wastewater. Checking to see who's okay with that?
I'm good, mayor.
I see yes for Mr. Prather, yes for Mr. Gleason, yes for Mr. Mendoza, yes for Mr. Gonzalez. Looking over here at this end, I'll record a no from Ms. Garza. Mr. Scott? It's yes and I'm a yes. Onto our next topic.
Okay, and now Griselle Perez-Carry will go over the utility assistance program and resource navigation.
Good evening, council, mayor. Griselle Perez-Carry, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator. All right. During the June twenty-seventh budget workshop and during other meetings, we've heard council and shared the importance of evaluating the efficacy of our programs and services, particularly those that provide financial assistance within our community to ensure that our intent matches the impact felt by our community members. This evening, I'd like to provide a brief overview of our evaluation of the city's utility assistance program that aim to identify barriers and opportunities to increase timely accessibility to this resource, particularly to those in the greatest need. Additionally, I'll provide insight on our existing practice of resource navigation. As we discuss utility assistance, I'd like to note the utility assistance within San Marcos is provided through several agencies that are partially funded through the Human Services Advisory Board and Community Development Block Grant for emergency services, of which utility assistance is a part of, and with different processes and funding capacity. In addition to this, funding a hundred and twenty thousand dollars have been allocated by San Marcos Utilities, specifically for utility assistance and is administered by Community Action. In total, the amount allocated by the city towards this category of emergency services is two hundred and thirty-one thousand. In its current state, the city's utility assistance program's a hundred and twenty thousand is divided in equal parts towards customers' electric and water wastewater utility bills. Our program works in concert with the state's Comprehensive Energy Assistance Program and Low Income Household Water Assistance Program. All three of these programs are administered by Community Action and Share and Application. Funding for the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program was consumed and the program ended in March twenty-twenty-four. Though programs have similar eligibility criteria, an important, or excuse me, an impactful difference is the income threshold. Whereas SEAP is a hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty level, the city's program is two hundred and fifty thousand, aiding a greater number of households. Within our program, customers may receive assistance twice a year for the current billing period and balance not exceeding sixty days. In accounting for all three of these programs, a total of five hundred and seventy-six accounts have received utility assistance by way of community action this fiscal year. As previously mentioned, the city's program can cover a balance of current bill and up to sixty days of outstanding balance and fees of up to twice a year. The limit of funds a household can receive for SEAP in a year is two thousand four hundred. However, actual awards amounts vary based on available funding, customer usage, and when the application is submitted. This year, Community Action received one point three million from the state to be distributed within Hayes, Caldwell, and Blanco counties, as opposed to one point four million last year. This year, Community Action has been able to provide up to six months of utility assistance for vulnerable households or three months of assistance for non-vulnerable households. A vulnerable household is defined as one by having a household member who is over the age of sixty, five years or younger, a veteran, or disabled. If eligible, customers may receive funding from SEAP and the city's program. For example, since the full consumption of the low-income water program, customers have been awarded assistance from SEAP to cover electric and the city's funding for the water wastewater. It is anticipated that SEAP funding will be fully consumed this month or next, at which point there will be a greater reliance of the city's program. While I've shared a bit about what has been funded, I'd like to briefly walk through the application process. Applications open on the third week of January and are required each calendar year. They may be completed and submitted with assistance in person at Community Action or the Senior Citizen Center or during events held at the San Marcos Public Library, for example. Applications can also be submitted via email, fax, or mail. The processing timeline may vary based on the volume of applications, how quickly an applicant submits additional documents needed, and/or if a household meets the parameters of an emergency after having received a disconnect notice as defined by the state. If circumstances fit what the state defines as an emergency, an applicant may be placed toward the top of the list. An emergency is defined. An emergency is defined as a household that needs electricity for life-saving measures such as insulin or a breathing machine, a natural disaster is declared by the governor, or specific temperature triggers during winter and summer months. Once an application is received by Community Action, the process begins with the initial review of the application, the supporting documents, and a calculation of income for eligibility conducted by their administrative assistant. If different or additional documents are needed, applicants are given two weeks to submit documents requested. One example of incorrect documents that is regularly seen is a correct, or current or upcoming proof of income versus the past 30 days by which income calculations are based upon. Community Action then requests customer usage from the city, and my conversations with them, they've been very complimentary on how quickly we provide that necessary information. The application is further processed, and a touch point or follow-up is done by the case manager serving San Marcos. After the follow-up and confirmation that an account is still active, customers receive communication via email, phone, and mail regarding an award. Utility assistance pledges are sent to utility billing where accounts are reconciled regularly. If applicants are denied, they can reapply after 30 days, typically in the event that there is a change in income, or if they were denied due to insufficient documentation. Throughout the different touchpoints with Community Action, there is information on additional resources that could be shared with community members.
Question?
Yes.
If someone gets disconnected, let's say on a Friday, and Community Action's closed after 5:00, what happens then? Are they going to go without power all that weekend?
Yes.
I thought we didn't do disconnections on either Friday or Friday afternoons for that very reason. We do?
Yeah, because that makes it real difficult.
Right. Well, yeah, I thought that's why we didn't do them on Friday, when we had conversations before.
We do, the only thing that I believe by ordinance is that temperatures, so if they're below freezing, we wouldn't turn off heat, for example. If it's above, if it's above 100 or 100-degree temperatures, then we also won't turn it off. So, right now, with the excessive heat warnings, we wouldn't be turning people off.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are the only two.
But I probably swore we didn't do no weekends before weekends.
Yeah, why, why would we do them on Fridays? You're at work, you come home, it's 5:30, and you find you're disconnected for the weekend.
It's something that we can look at, it's not anything that I'm aware of that has been discussed by the council.
Well, we can make a motion not to do it.
Yeah, we had full discussion when we were talking about paying for everybody's utility bills, and we had all discussion about disconnections and-
Yeah.
Well, let's reconfirm that.
Yep.
That's a good idea.
One other question, what is reconnection fee? And do you, just reconnect it?
Let me answer the other one first, and then I'll let John take care of that cost. We can administratively, Ms. Reyes, we can administratively take care of that now. We'll go and say, we'll make sure we get our disconnects done that week, Monday through Thursday, and we'll just take care of that administratively, we don't need action from council.
That was an easy fix.
We just did the direction.
It's great, but I thought we were already doing it that way.
Well, it's an easy fix.
Going back to the fee to do that, to disconnect it, how we're looking at 150 bucks?
It's 40 dollars if it's reconnected during normal business hours, and I think it's getting late, so I'm starting to nod.
It's a lot, I will tell you all, because I got my water disconnected, it was a lot of money.
It's, I know, it's 100 and something, and I don't know the exact number, I might need to follow up with you, if it's done after hours, so if we have to, you know, call out staff or something after hours to do it.
If it's 150 dollars and Community Action is giving them the money, ain't we just rotating the money from them to us, back to them?
Yeah, it's our money.
Sounds nonsensical.
Well, and one thing to keep in mind with Community Action is they use our money last, so they have other federal and state funding sources that they'll use to help customers, and then once they exhaust all of that funding, then they use the city's money.
So that's why the amount is so low.
Okay, thank you.
But I was thinking, surely there's more need.
Well, and that, I mean, even disconnects aren't going to tell you what you want to know, because there are people who-
Well, it'll tell us everything, but it'll tell us something.
Yes, but it's not necessarily going to paint an accurate representation, because sometimes there are people who just forget to pay their bills, it's not because there's an inability to pay, and we hear that a lot from the meter readers, that that's what happens. So that would not be a good source of data necessarily to rely on, you'd have to really look at people who are either, you know, close to disconnection, maybe with payment plans or things like that, so we would need to look and look a little bit broader than just disconnects to tell the true story. I think disconnects, generally speaking, give a pretty, like, a good snapshot, and then you drill down, we don't just like not give information because we have to drill down further, does that make sense? I'm not disputing that, all I'm saying is, is that if you're wanting it for us, like, to make informed decisions, just trying to, you know, to say what the nuances are in terms of what we would need to consider.
I'd be curious what, how many disconnect notices we have versus how many actually get disconnected, but, okay.
And that after-hours amount is 170.
170?
Yes.
Yeah, it's usually how much people owe on their bill.
I was gonna say, that's like next month's bill.
Wow.
I understand. Okay, now we know.
I'm just like, y'all don't know any poor people, how do y'all, how did y'all know that they weren't, that they disconnect on the weekends?
I knew it was 150 bucks.
Like, what? How did we all, how did most of us think that that wasn't happening?
Because we had this conversation, I swear, we were told that disconnects were not done on Fridays.
Y'all need to make more poor friends.
Who does the reconnection?
I'm sorry?
Who does the reconnection?
The utilities department.
The utilities department? And what, the people that do it are paid overtime, that's where you come with the 170?
Yes.
Okay.
You see, Blue Bonnet doesn't charge to come back and connect you and reconnect you on the weekend or whenever.
They don't charge at all?
What about if we take our salary, people, and have them do the reconnections?
Okay.
I was wondering if you were awake.
And, you know, that is an example of those other fees that are going to be reviewed during fiscal year 25 that we touched on earlier, all of those, that falls under that other fee category.
Yeah, but one of the things that I've been concerned about, because I have heard about these, is that Community Action, and this is no shade on Community Action, is because of the application process that they use, it takes a while, and if you just had to pay a huge car repair bill, or a large medical bill, that you thought you were going to use that for your utility payment, and now you can't, and now it's like you're two days away from disconnect, you're in a, you're in a world of hurt.
But they give pledge letters as well, right? Doesn't that, they provide a pledge letter?
Yes.
What I'm leading up to is, and would we accept it, there's other agencies that don't have the, whatever this application, federal, something, something, whatever, application that you fill out at Community Action, which I understand, I'm not criticizing, I'm just, I think I'm stating a fact, there are others that require less, and that's where I've been talking to Ms. Reyes about how to get dollars, is that on another slide that I think I remember seeing?
If we can get through the presentation, I think some of that stuff will be answered.
That's good, I saw it on there, but I still wasn't seeing what I was hoping to see.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely. While we'll continue to assess and conduct a deeper dive with available demographic data to identify trends and explore solutions to increase access to those in greatest need, the following are some barriers and opportunities we have identified. Submitting the full list of supporting documents may be out of fear, discomfort, or as a cost barrier have presented challenges to applicants in submitting their application. This in turn adds time to their timeline or results in the denial of their application. As we look forward, we will continue providing support and navigating the process to obtain or replace documents required as part of the application. One notable example is birth certificates as a specific document that has been challenging particularly for first-time applicants due to its cost. We're actively identifying local agencies that may be able to provide financial assistance for birth certificates, exploring additional appointment times for birth certificates based on applicants' needs and availability, and creating a more direct line of communication between city clerk's office and Community Action to address questions or challenges. In the coming months in preparation for 2025, staff will intentionally work with Community Action to provide additional information within the application packet about the city's program, its eligibility criteria, and document required based on the agreement parameters. By doing so, the intent is to provide clarity on the existence of the program and specifically outline and simplify the documentation needed on behalf of each customer and members of their household. As previously stated, the timeline and length of process varies based on volume and staff capacity and historically has risen up to 10 weeks. We recognize that this serves as a barrier and a challenge for households facing emergency needs, as we've briefly discussed. As we continue to share applications and information about resources at outreach events in each clerk station, the utility billing, and neighbors seeking resources or expressing need for assistance, we can amplify Community Action's message encouraging eligible households to submit applications for assistance earlier in the year to maximize available funding and provide clear information and guidance for gathering necessary documents. While good communication exists, for example, in providing customer account usage, information on accounts that may no longer be active in award approvals or pledges, there's opportunity for us to increase community, excuse me, communication and efforts to better support applicants. Keeping capacity in mind, we aim to identify sustainable levels of communication and information sharing to enhance and support our neighbors as they navigate this process. Some examples include drawing that direct line regarding birth certificates and receiving monthly notice of applications that have been denied, to which we could then compare to some of those disconnect notices. In addition to these things, we're initiating regular meetings and touchpoints with agencies receiving funding to better understand their processes, operational capacity, challenges, and barriers to service. In doing so, we aim to identify collaborative ways utility assistance can be awarded responsibly, yet expeditiously in alignment with council's objectives. If council is interested, we can bring forth work session items to work through options and get clear direction. As we aim to continue working with community partners and engaging in conversations that support increasing access to resources and services and broadening impact, I'd be remiss if I did not share what we currently do to support resource navigation. Librarians at the San Marcos Public Library are available to provide bilingual resource referral as part of the Information Dust Services each day of the week. In practice, this may entail things such as providing a list of phone numbers to reliable and trusted agencies, helping patrons research services available at different agencies, and/or printing out applications such as utility assistance application. Additionally, the library hosts drop-in hours and offers appointments for more intentional or one-on-one assistance and coordinates library programs in response to current needs for our community members. Each week, a care navigator from SHIB is available from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Tuesday mornings to provide community members assistance with finding aid specific to their needs. At the same time, someone from the St. David's Grant is available to assist with Spanish translation to care navigation. Seen here is a handout developed by the library that outlines their programs and services to support needs within our community, as well as the resources and services provided by community partners within San Marcos. While not intended to be a comprehensive list of resources within the community, this may be a place for us to start. As a living document, this handout will be revised regularly to ensure it encompasses current and existing resources available within the community, accounting for updates or changes such as capacity and resource availability and/or new programs and services. The handout will be translated into Spanish and is available to staff who regularly answer phones to engage with community members. Additionally, it could be printed double-sided and provided directly to members of the community. In addition to the library, staff across various departments and teams provide support to community members facing needs by regularly providing resource referrals and access to other programs and services, providing relevant information and context to staff about agencies and resources, and contributing to a multifunctional approach to serving our community. Some examples of this include neighborhood enhancement through their collaborative partnerships with parent liaisons, and within the homeless outreach team, which is comprised of staff from marshals and police departments. Utility billing, who in addition to providing referral to utility assistance program administered by Community Action, also provides information about other resources and a willingness to work with account holders who may need an extension or a payment plan, and staff within the city manager's office, to include myself as the diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. The One City One Voice initiative will aim to enhance the customer experience by creating conditions for all staff to be able to serve as resource navigators by increasing awareness of programs, services, and resources available, and enabling staff to provide information in a warm handoff. In addition to tools such as the handout developed by library staff, the community resource webpage that could be accessed directly from our homepage, and the wealth of knowledge of staff across the organization, we remain committed to finding new information to assist with resource referral navigation, one example including 201 Texas, which provides resource referral via phone in both English and Spanish, and its online registry that allows users to search based on their location, specific needs. In closing, we recognize that there are more things that we could do and are committed to exploring innovative and different solutions to broaden the impact of financial assistance to those most vulnerable within our community.
Well, I really love these financial assistance programs, utility assistance, I think it's important that we, when folks struggle, that we handle this compassionately, so I'm glad that we're putting resources and funding to these efforts.
And another thing that I don't think I quite touched on in great detail is our utility billing department, who really handle things with compassion, right, and are wanting to work with our neighbors when they call, I think that there's parameters that we could talk about, such as, you know, a disconnect, or someone can't call day of the disconnect, right, and I think that those are things that we'll continue to explore, but I think that they're a great resource in and of itself.
I have a question.
Yes.
Who did you talk to in Community Action when you were trying to get the information?
Francesca and Frank, so Frank Cantu is our specific case manager that serves our area.
Gotcha, did they share with you any of their survey findings that kind of paint the level of need based off of, they're excellent at doing surveys, like, it's really impressive.
Yeah, they did not, but that's part of what we're hoping when we just start doing these regular check-ins, right, to really center that experience, and part of the conversation that I last had with them was around that of what is truly the experience of someone accessing these resources.
Right, and, yeah, and when we talk about what the need is, I mean, they can isolate it to just specifically San Marcos, for example, so we have had access to data regarding the need since at least 2020. In 2023, I text Stephanie and I said, I'm at this meeting, and it's being rated as one of the biggest needs, I honestly didn't know, I went to that meeting by accident, and so, yeah, that's something that would be, I think, beneficial for you to tap into.
Awesome, thank you.
And then I just wanted to make note before I forget, but there's another really amazing resource, and I'm really surprised it hasn't made this list, because I think these are arguably like the best care navigators in Hayes County, and it's open to everybody, and that's with the whole country, MHDD, they have care navigators, like, they will walk with you through the process, which I think a lot of the folks that we give money to, they've expressed and we're seeing it with, what, up to 10 weeks turnaround time sometimes, and that's if you're, you know, get through all the other barriers you listed. They don't have the capacity to walk with our neighbors, which I feel a lot of our neighbors need that, so that's something that I'm surprised isn't already on this list.
Okay, council, you know, we've had programs to help people, but I don't think that they've always been as well-publicized as we're doing better, doing better at.
Did you ask us, or you guys told us that we are going to unpack this morning work session, because at one point, you guys did give us information on, like, reasons for denials and rates in which applications are denied, and I think that that is also really valuable for us to understand and know.
Okay.
And what we're feeling is that there's kind of primarily two groups of individuals, you know, the first set is those that may need more extensive services, and so that's where the Community Action one that has- and so that's where the Community Action one that has all the different federal, you know, programs and things that are available. So it still has a need, and it still serves a certain, you know, level of, for individuals, but then there's the group that just need this utility assistance and may not need to fill out that federal program. So it's trying to figure out from council what you want to do. Do you want to funnel some money, you know, through the HSAB and do it for specifically, you know, somebody who can provide a proposal about what they could do for a more streamlined process? Do you want to go out for an RP? So those are, you know, and have people submit proposals, so that's what we want to talk about in a work session. To try to get some of that clear-
Let's do that in a work session.
Criteria. So that's what we were asking tonight, was giving you information, asking you what type of additional information you would like, and then to try to bring back a work session so that y'all can spend more time on this one topic.
Y'all good with that? Yeah, I've been wanting the alternate methods for quite some time. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And where are we now on item 20, because we're still supposed to provide some direction to staff? Regarding setting the dates, which we don't really have choice on, but setting the dates.
So Mr. Locke just has a couple more slides.
Oh, we've got a whole bunch more funds. Never mind. I'm trying to move us along, you know how I am.
And resource recovery, and transit.
Well, let's roll.
Okay. The good thing is we're getting into the smaller funds. They can buy it a little quicker. This is the stormwater fund, total budget $10 million on revenue and expense. On the expense side, you can see the breakout of the budget on the, for stormwater with 43% being debt service. That's all of the stormwater infrastructure projects that the city's undertaking. 33% operating and 19% personnel. This slide shows where we think we're going to finish fiscal year '24, and we are estimating that we're going to finish with a $2.6 million fund balance. That's what we'll start fiscal year '25 with, and the revenues and expenses are budgeted the same, so that's what we'll finish with, which is a 99 days cash on hand. The target for stormwater is 90 days, so if we finish there, we will be above what our target is, and we'll have some money for, to cash fund some one-time projects. Looking at the revenues changes in stormwater, there's no rate adjustment being proposed. The increase that you see in revenues is just from the growth in accounts, and this is, a big part of this is the general fund using its capacity to pay for the stormwaters' capital projects. On the expense side, the cost driver listed there is just the personnel increase, and you can see the cost of that in the stormwater fund. In the resource recovery fund, total revenues next year will be eight, just over $8 million, and you can see the breakout of that. Garbage collection makes up 68% of that, and recycling makes up 28%. On the expense side, it's just under $8 million. The bulk of that is operating expenses, as you can see, 90%, but the biggest part of that being the refuse collector contract, that's $5.2 million. Looking at how we're estimating to finish fiscal year '24, we're estimating to finish with a $2.9 million fund balance. And then in fiscal year '25, we're estimating to bring in more revenues than expenses and finish with a $3.3 million fund balance, which would put us at 150 days. And resource recovery, we are building up this fund balance to use to help cash fund the new resource recovery site. The increase in revenues is from a 1% incremental rate adjustment, as well as for the dollar for the mattress removal program that was approved earlier in the fiscal year. Looking at the cost drivers and resource recovery, you have the personnel driver. The biggest is on the operating side. The solid waste residential contract that will increase by $250,000. The recycling services will increase by $450,000. $411,000 of that is just implementing that new mattress removal program. And then that takes us to the resource recovery rate history. You can see over the years, there's typically a rate adjustment. In this particular year, it didn't look like we were going to need one, and rather than adjusting rates higher in a future year, we did the small 1% increment adjustment. When you look at the percentage, it looks higher because of the dollar that we're adding up for the mattress removal program. That's why it's higher than 1%. And the last slide on the utility shows the overall impact to the utility bill payer. This takes in average residential rate payer, and you can see in fiscal year '24, when you look across all of the electric water, water wastewater, stormwater, resource recovery, and community enhancement, the average bill would be $259. When you look at the proposed rate adjustments for fiscal year '25, that would be $272. So that's an increase of $13, which is a 5.5% overall increase for all of those proposed rate adjustments. And that takes us to the resource recovery decision points.
Okay, folks, are we good with the 1% rate increase?
I'm good, Mayor.
See, yes, yes, yes. Okay, got it. Okay.
The next fund is our airport fund. Revenues and expenses are about $900,000. Most of that fund is from contractual services, and that's with the Texas Aviation Partners. Looking at the fund balance slide, we're estimating to finish fiscal year '24 at $67,000. Right now, the revenues don't look like they're going to make it to what budget is, so we're estimating that we're going to finish using about $28,000 of fund balance. So we would begin fiscal year '25 with $67,000 of fund balance, and revenues and expenses are budgeted the same, so that's what we would end with. There is no fund balance requirement in this particular fund.
I have a question about the, when we were discussing the the study, the sales tax and property tax out at the airport, what was the timeline on that? Were we looking at a year or two on the discussion on that? I couldn't remember.
It was fiscal year '26 is when we would bring the recommendation to city council to see what year it would be possible to do that.
Maybe, so maybe 2027 or something. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Didn't they make a profit last year?
Yes, sir.
But this year they didn't, you said?
Right. Well, that's what we're estimating. Right now, based on where the revenues are, we're estimating that they're going to be short about $28,000.
Take out their check.
I thought we went up on some hangar rentals and things this year.
We did, we did, and the revenues just aren't coming in the way that originally-
How much are we increasing the operator?
It has a, it has an annual increase. I think it's two. Thank you. Two percent, you said?
Yeah, but look at, look at the difference between operating revenue in 2024 and 2025, and you said, what, 99% of that was operator?
Actually, that's on the revenue side, which is closely related to fuel cells. So that is really just subject to air traffic coming in and out of the airport.
Hold on. I was on the wrong line then, maybe, but I remember seeing it look like that was, there was a large jump there, airport. No, 679 to 691.
Yes, that is the, that is that 2% increase with the Texas Aviation Partners, as well as within their contract, if they increase revenues by a certain percent, then they're, then they get a portion of that revenue increase. And so we've budgeted as if they are going to do that, and that's $18,000. So the sum of those two is what's making that increase from '24 to '25.
It seems weird that they get like this bonus thing if we do better, but then that jumps us into a negative overall. Just something wrong with that picture.
And Mayor, we will have a chance to look at the structure of the contract as their contract is expiring during the course of FY '25, so we've already started that review of the contract, and we'll be bringing that to council for your consideration.
I mean, I think they do a good job. I'm just looking at the dollars and, you know, we keep thinking this is going to work, and we keep thinking this is going to work, and we get to the end of the year, and it doesn't always work.
And I just want to point out that there was a question about, you know, whether or not they were making a profit. For those years where there were no profits, there was also no ending balance. So now you see a fund balance that we can actually take from, and that's the result of profitable years creating that fund balance, that ending balance.
Good point.
And I think if we're not looking at the property tax and sales tax generated out there, we're not really looking at the true profitability anyway. So that's why I haven't ever really brought that up, because I'm like, we don't really know until that study is done. I don't, you kind of put all that on paper anyway.
And there's some very rough estimates, and these are very draft numbers, but there's some estimates of roughly $300,000 of tax revenue
Okay.
on property tax that is flowing to the general fund instead of the airport fund.
Yeah, that needs to stay out there, and that would definitely impact the profitability of the value as goes up and that money flowing in.
But then it hits us in the general fund.
It's going to, but I'd rather, if they're doing a good job out there and they're seeing growth, it gives you a better picture of what your airport is doing.
Right, I'd rather, I'd rather see it the other way.
Whether there's, even if there's not a lot of growth, it's just, is there more demand for hangers? Is the value going up? Are they selling, you know, doing more maintenance out there?
And it's 10:39 p.m.
Yeah, I know. Well, just remember that when we're discussing other stuff later.
It's just, it's eight years ago, they came to us and we worked on the contract, and they're just supposed to be in the red for a couple of years, but they've been in the red several more years after that. I mean, I don't know. What happens if we don't give them the money?
I think that would become illegal.
What happens if?
Well, we have contracts with these folks, so we'd have to look at that, but the contract provides for payments based on performance of certain things, and
We gotta reduce this contract.
We'd have some issues if we-
All right, I'm just, I know what could happen. Thank you.
Is there a question for us on airport?
No, there is not.
Okay.
So that takes us to our last fund, transit. And the total budget, revenue budget in transit, $2.9 million, and expense, $2.8 million. On the revenue side for transit, it's important just to see that 41% is coming from federal and state transit funds, 42% from the general fund, and 15% in fiscal year '25 is coming from CARES and ARPA funding. That funding is going to go away, and when it does, we're estimating that the general fund's contribution will increase by about $300,000. And on the next slide, you can see we're estimating that we're going to finish this year by adding $300,000 to fund balance, and we would finish at $906,000. That's what we began '25 with, and '25 has $42,000 more revenue than expense budgeted, so we would finish with 121 days of cash on hand in the transit fund. The major cost drivers, you see the cost of the 3% personnel increase, and the point that we were just mentioning is that that federal funding will go away at the end of fiscal year '26. So as we enter in fiscal year '27, Ms. Reyes has talked about the tsunami slide. This item is on it for fiscal year '27, where the general fund will have to pick up that $300,000.
And when you say federal funding, you're talking about CARES and ARPA, not the federal funding for transit?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And that takes us to the enterprise funds decision points that we haven't covered, and it's really just other direction for staff that you may have picked up as we went through stormwater forward.
Have we covered all our concerns, desires so far?
Very thorough presentation, John, and well put together. Thank you.
Yes, and thank you to QAB members.
Yes.
Those who are still here, able to still be here, and those who had to leave. We thank you because we know those are not easy decisions, and we appreciate y'all doing the deeper dive and then bringing it to us, so it really is important, so thank you. Okay. Oh, there's the next, there's another slide here.
This is just next steps. We already touched on we'd be at the Neighborhood Commission tomorrow, the four public hearings that we'll have on the budget and the tax rate, and that city council will consider the budget and tax rate adoption on September 17.
Okay, and my instructions here, it doesn't say we vote, but it does say provide direction to staff. I think we've done a lot of that already, and just make sure everybody's good with the dates of September 3rd and 17th.
Mayor, I apologize if there's been a misunderstanding or miscommunication. I think, just because of the, try to require, I think it'd be better to have a record vote on it
I agree.
on a motion to set the date.
I agree, but that's not what our agenda thing says. So I would entertain a motion to set the dates of September 3rd and 17th as the dates to hold public hearings and our votes, so I would entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Thompson, seconded by Mr. Prather. Mr. Vino's already got us set up to vote on our push buttons. And-
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you, because I feel a whole lot better having something official on that. Does this conclude this section? All right. Thank you very much. It has been 90 minutes since our last break. Do y'all want to take one or press on for a little longer?
I think we should just press on, try to get as much done as possible.
I think if we take a two, three-minute break.
Okay, two minutes.
Come right back. And from our break, and we are at item 21.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-161R, setting a maximum proposed tax rate of 60.30 cents per $100 of taxable value, setting the dates of September 3rd, 2024, and September 17th, 2024, to hold public hearings on the tax rate and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mendoza, seconded by Mr. Prather to approve. Mr. Locke.
I promise this presentation is shorter than the last.
It would have to be. The package is not that long.
So as we look at setting the maximum proposed tax rate, the different tax rates that come into play, there's the no new revenue rate, and that's the tax rate that will produce the same amount of revenue as the previous fiscal year on properties that are taxed in both years. The proposed rate, which is the tax rate that is used to build the FY '25 budget, the current rate, which is the tax rate that we're using this fiscal year, and the voter approval rate. And the voter approval rate is essentially taking the no new revenue rate and increasing it by 3.5% and it adds on the debt and any unused increment from the prior three years. The unused increment is the difference between the tax rate that the city sets and the voter approval rate. The important thing to note with the voter approval rate is if you exceed this, that rate, it triggers an automatic election. This slide provides a comparison of the revenue that would be generated by each one of those rates. So if you focus on what the box is around the proposed budget and recommended maximum rate, it's also our current rate, so that box could have been put around the current rate too. It's the 60.30, and as you see, it'll generate $52 million of property tax revenue. If we were to go with the no new revenue rate, we would have 293,000 less tax dollars. And if we went with the- thousand less tax dollars, and if we went with the voter approval rate, we'd have eight point six million dollars more tax revenue dollars. There are two components to the tax rate, the operations and the debt, and in fiscal year twenty-five, the operations component is forty-five cents, and the debt component is fifteen point three cents, which is about twenty-five percent. We use the debt to fund those major capital projects that we issue debt for, and we pay for over the, its useful life, and we use the operations for their core services, council strategic goals, the investing in employees that we discussed earlier, as well as any special programs. This is the taxable value trend. It shows it from twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-five. Just a couple of things to point out on this slide. If you look at twenty, the difference between twenty-two and twenty-three under the net taxable value and twenty-three, twenty-four, the taxable value grew by one point five billion dollars in both of those years. As we move into the current year, from twenty-four to twenty-five, it grew by four hundred and sixty-four million dollars. As you, in the center column is the value of the tax increment financing zones, and the far right-hand column, where it says remaining net taxable value, that's what the city has to operate off of. And you can compare the percent change, the growth in that particular year, to the three, five, and ten-year growth. Those are the numbers at the very bottom of the slide. So when you look at the remaining net taxable value, the, the total amount grew four and a half percent, which is well below what we have been experiencing when you look at the three, five, and ten-year growth rates. This slide is, this shows basically a summary of that information in just a graphical format. You can see from twenty-one through twenty-five, that adjusted taxable value is the same as the remaining on the prior slide, and you can just see the growth in blue is what the city operates on, and gray, that's the value of the tax increment financing zones. This slide shows the homestead average assessed value, as well as the homestead count growth over, from twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-five. Through that time period, the average value growth is twelve percent year over year. That's the average growth. In fiscal year twenty-five, when you go from twenty-four to twenty-five, that value grew by eight percent, so not, not as high as what the average has, has been. On the homestead side, we saw a lot, a bigger jump in homestead counts than what we've had on average. On average, we've grown about eight hundred homesteads a year through that time period, and from twenty-four to twenty-five, we grew by fifteen hundred homesteads.
And Mr. Locke, is that just because of the expansion of the homestead programs that we implemented in the community?
Well, it, it's just the expansion of people moving into the, into the city and having a homestead on their house. Yes, sir.
Just all the new houses we see getting constructed, constructed, right?
Yes, ma'am. So this is, this compares the homestead annual tax levy from fiscal year twenty-four to twenty-five. The average assessed value, home value, is on top, and those are from the prior slide, and you can see that from, in twenty-four to twenty-five, the average assessed value went up by twenty-seven thousand dollars. When you apply the homestead exemption to that, the fifteen thousand, you arrive at what the taxable value of that property is. The tax rate is being proposed to stay the same, to stay the current tax rate, so there's no change there. And the annual tax levy difference between twenty-four and twenty-five is a hundred and sixty-four dollars. On a monthly basis, that, that would be fourteen dollars. At the bottom of the slide, you see what the value of that homestead exemption is. It saves the homestead taxpayer ninety, ninety dollars a year. One of the things the city has of our one and a half percent sales tax rate, a half percent of that goes to property tax relief. And what this slide shows is the impact that that has on our tax rate. If you look at, with current sales tax, you, it takes that same average value, the three hundred and sixty-five thousand, to arrive at the taxable value, to eventually arrive at that twenty-one hundred dollar annual tax levy. If we did not have this in place, our tax rate would be over fourteen cents higher. And so our tax rate, to generate the same amount of revenue that we do, we would have to have a tax rate just under seventy-five cents. So you see the annual levy would be twenty-six hundred dollars, which is five, over five hundred dollars higher. And this, this slide shows, compares the existing property taxable value growth to new property taxable value growth from twenty-one to twenty-five. You can, the blue color is the existing growth, and the gray is the new growth. So that's new value that's being added to the city's tax roll. You can see in twenty-three and twenty-four, those are really big years on both existing appraisal growth, as well as new value being added. In twenty-five, there was actually a negative amount added for reappraisal growth. And part of that is, you know, when you think, Texas State purchased two apartment complexes that took seventy-seven million dollars off the tax roll, you know, that plays in, into that. Fortunately, there, there was, there's over five hundred million dollars of new value added, so there was still a net amount added to the tax roll. On, on the right-hand side, it shows of the new value added, how much of that was residential and how, how much of it was commercial. So there were a total of seven hundred and twenty-two new residential units added, at a taxable value of two hundred million. There were twenty-four commercial units added at a value of about two hundred million dollars. So for every commercial unit that was added, the average amount added was over eight million dollars, compared to two hundred and seventy-eight thousand residential, which is why it's, it's important to diversify the tax base, because you can see that, you know, commercial, commercial units tend to use less city resources, and they bring in more tax revenue and help subsidize the residential units, which lessens the, the tax burden on resi, for residents.
On the commercial side of that, does that include apartment complexes, or are those included in residential?
Those would be on the...
They'd be on the commercial side, wouldn't they?
I, I, that's what I'm, I want to say, commercial side, and, and just to confirm, I will look it up and follow up with you, but I believe it is on the commercial side.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think we asked that last year.
I felt like I had, you talked a bit about it before, but just to kind of figure out what commercial we have coming in, and where that growth is.
I mean, yeah, because we need to know that.
I have a follow-up with that to confirm. So setting the property tax rate, the process, this evening, City Council will set the maximum proposed tax rate, and this just establishes the ceiling for next fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five's tax rate. There'll be two public hearings on that rate on September third and September seventeenth, and City Council will set the tax rate as scheduled for September seventeenth. When that tax rate is set, it can be at or lower than what is the maximum tax rate that is set this evening. The recommendation is to, to not increase the tax rate and keep the tax rate the same as the current tax rate, which is the sixty point three zero, and to schedule the dates of September third and September seventeenth to hold public hearings on the tax rate. And that concludes the presentation.
Okay, and we've got a motion on the floor to do this already, so at this point, if nobody's got any questions, we can just vote on it.
The motion passes six to one.
All right, so we've concluded item twenty-one, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, council, I'm going to suggest that we postpone item thirty-two. That's discussion about City Hall in a committee. I don't think that we're going to be at our best to be making those decisions this evening, so we can just push, y'all good with pushing that to the next agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Got the, Ms. Reyes, Ms. Trevino? Okay.
Do we need a, do we need a motion of, yeah?
To post, to push it to next time?
For the discussion, do we need to do that?
If there's consensus.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Yes. Okay, y'all, the next items, some of them, we could go through pretty quickly. Are y'all good if we do twenty-six next, because these people have been here for so, for so long?
Yes, yes, yes.
Twenty-six, Mayor?
Twenty-six.
Receive a presentation, consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash one fifty-five R, approving funding agreements with Southside Community Center, an amount of eight hundred thousand from funds received by the city under the American Rescue Plan for the purpose of implementing a plan for recommendations provided by the Comprehensive Needs Assessment Study and Recommendations in Homelessness to support the recovery of the community. Authorize the city manager her desert need to execute the agreements and any necessary related documents on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
I'll give that one to Mr. Gleason, and the second one to Mr. Scott. Mr. Carr.
Greg Carr, Director of Neighborhood Enhancement. I do want to give a shout out for them staying through the John Locke Show. It was a very interesting show. But we do have Southside with us today. We have Tom Solmi, their board chair, Deborah Villapondo, their executive director, and new to the team, but very important to the team, is Claudette Blythe, and she's their project manager. So we've been working on this homeless stuff for a long time. You know, we started with university, then went with Dr. Marbut, and when Dr. Marbut was here, he, his recommendation that Southside was probably the entity that was going to be able to carry us forward. Luckily, we were able to talk them into doing it for us.
Yes.
And we've worked on a lot of things. Thankfully, somebody said, you know, we should probably bring in Claudette to help us with this, because it takes somebody with some special skills and stuff. And so we have a presentation for you tonight, and Claudette's going to give that, and I think it answers a lot of the questions that we had from the homeless committee meeting, so Claudette.
Awesome. Thank you, Greg. My name is Claudette Blythe. I am the project manager over at Southside Community Center, and so I want to go through this presentation that I've put together to just kind, kind of go over the details of the project. So I want to just jump into the name of the project, which is the Community-Based Strategic Action on Homelessness Project. I thought it'd be beneficial to give a little bit of background on what we're doing, so that's going to take us to this slide here, and I'm just going to read from the slide. So the Community-Based Strategic Action on Homelessness Project aims to develop, implement, and ensure the successful launch of, of comprehensive services focusing on coordinated entry, intake, and client management. With a budget of eight hundred thousand dollars, this project will address the critical need for effective homelessness prevention through the implementation of intensive case management support, rapid rehousing solutions, and an increase in capacity through the coordinated efforts of community-based services within San Marcos and the surrounding areas. So a little bit about the purpose of this project. This project will address and identify growth in the homelessness and housing instability, and multiple disconnected efforts with gaps in service provisions. Our three key major strategic action steps include stopping the growth, improving existing systems through effectiveness and efficiencies, and of course, expanding capacity. I'd like to share our guiding principles, which is, first and foremost, homelessness is a community problem that will require a community solution. So our commitment is that we will build a community-based network to help neighbors in need. We will also use best practices and data-driven decisions to guide our work. We will implement collaborative technology to support coordinated services, and we will honor the humanity and dignity of all people and help the entire community to thrive. Our project overview includes three objectives, the first being coordinated community-based services. What that looks like is a homeless prevention and rapid rehousing through intake, coordinated entry, and client management systems, which is HMIS for us. Also, establish processes using case management to leverage existing community-based assets and to identify critical gaps. Objective two is community capacity building. That will look like activating a community-based network of partners and volunteers in coordinated, in a coordinated approach to help, helping our neighbors in need, and also identifying existing service gaps in the community and working with partners to find community provisions for those services. Lastly, objective three would be to improve community-based physical infrastructure, which would support strategic action, including improved and/or expanded safe multipurpose spaces that can support community initiatives and activities. I'll go a little bit further into that as we move along. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our target population, those experiencing homelessness or at risk of homelessness. So that is serving our San Marcos residents, and we can define that a little bit later and what that looks like. But our primary objective is serving San Marcos resident families at risk or experiencing homelessness for the first time. Our secondary objective is serving San Marcos resident families at risk or experiencing homelessness in a reoccurring situation, and our tertiary objective would be serving individuals at risk or, or experiencing homelessness for the first time or in an episodic manner. So that puts us to our key deliverables. Those look like activating a network of community partners and volunteers to help neighbors in need, developing a homelessness prevention and rapid rehousing framework, implementing coordinated entry processes for easier access to services, establishing standard intake procedures for streamlined client onboarding and information sharing, and then lastly, implementing a client management system like HMIS for secure data storage and reporting. So I know I threw around a lot of terms like coordinated entry, HMIS, and rapid rehousing. I thought it might be beneficial to define, quickly define, a couple of those terms. So coordinated entry is a system that provides a comprehensive assessment of the needs of individuals and families seeking housing and services, and offers corresponding referrals to housing and services based on their assessment outcomes. Coordinated entry, or CE, is a powerful piece of a community's housing crisis response system, as it ensures that people at risk of or experiencing homelessness can readily access and navigate housing assistance, no matter where in the community that they first seek that help. HMIS, or the Homeless Management Information System, is a computerized data collection tool specifically designed to capture client-level information over time. It collects information on the characteristics and service needs of individuals and families experiencing homelessness, and the services provided to those clients. So as we were sharing a little bit about HMIS to some of the partner agencies and some other potential partner agencies, one, a couple of questions kind of popped up. Folks were wanting to know what are the benefits of HMIS. So I thought I'd share a few of the benefits for the community with utilizing this system. The first is to identify service gaps. HMIS helps administrators pinpoint service gaps by tracking unmet needs, homelessness returns, and waiting lists for permanent housing. It also helps us with unduplicated client counts. HMIS ensures accurate client data through regular audits, allowing administrators to verify precise, unduplicated count of clients served in the community. verify precise, unduplicated count of clients served in the community. And then lastly, understanding the extent of homelessness. HMIS enables the analysis of community-level data, providing essential insights for making informed, system-wide policy decisions. The next slide shows some of the benefits for the clients themselves. First of all, HMIS, it helps us to coordinate case management services. It tracks clients across various programs and agencies within a community, allowing case managers to access and review a client's assessments, services, and referrals. This helps us to be much more efficient in our service delivery. Streamlined referrals are tracked digitally, showing when and where they were made and the outcomes. This eliminates the need for clients to manage their own referrals. And then lastly, a reduction of duplicate intakes and assessments, which is actually really huge, especially for our clients who come, go from one organization to another organization and having to refill out all of this information that can be re-traumatizing to them. So, the reduction of that duplication, HMIS saves clients' demographic information, preventing duplicate entries and assessments by alerting users if a client already exists in the system. So, now I'll share a brief definition of rapid rehousing and what that'll look like. Rapid rehousing provides short-term rental assistance and services. The goals are to help people obtain housing quickly, increase self-sufficiency, and to stay housed. It is offered without preconditions, such as employment, income, absence of criminal record, or sobriety. And the resources and services provided are typically tailored to the needs of the person. So, what we're talking about here is a wraparound supportive service program. Some of the key components of rapid rehousing is the intensive case management services. That's a core component of this program because it is typically following the client for up to one year, gradually tapering off as that client becomes a stable in housing. The community resources, of course, is a key component of rapid rehousing, as well as peer support services, the limited financial assistance, which could look like move-in assistance, utility assistance, and those types of things. And then lastly, is the landlord partnerships, which would be carried out through the housing specialists. So, this part is particularly exciting because a housing specialist goes out into the community. They locate landlords that are willing to work with us and help us to build a repository of housing options for our clients. So, what have we done so far? I came on in April of twenty-twenty-four, so just a few months, we've been able to do some incredible work. With the coordinated entry and HMIS building, as far as the capacity as well, we have submitted our application to the Texas Homelessness Network, or THN. Key staff has been trained and are now HMIS certified to utilize the HMIS system. We've completed our application for coordinated entry and submitted our MOU to THN. We've also began outreach to onboard local agency partners through the process outlined by THN. We've also onboarded, actually, this says too local, but we've onboarded several more, including SMCISD, Community Action, Salvation Army, just to name a few. And then, we've also hired a community outreach liaison to assist us in building those relationships slash capacity in the community to help us better serve our clients. So, with regard to our second objective, which was the rapid rehousing piece, we've developed a trauma-informed and strengths-based framework for the initial phases of the rapid rehousing program. And these are best, based on the best practices identified by the National Alliance on Homelessness Guidelines. We've developed job descriptions for essential housing specialists and case manager roles. We've implemented trauma-informed care training to all of our current staff that are essential to this project. We've initiated a case study to help us guide, to help guide our overall development of the program, which is particularly exciting. We've also begun outreach to partner landlords, including the creation of our landlord information packet to help us onboard new landlords. And then lastly, we've begun to implement a peer support specialist program in partnership with the San Marcos Public Library. With regard to increased physical infrastructure at Southside Center, we've identified and consulted with a local architectural firm to complete a conceptual site design and survey of Southside Center campus for necessary renovations and expansion. And then lastly, we have assessed and completed necessary repairs to the gym slash cafeteria community multipurpose space to address safety issues and accommodate neighbors and service delivery. So, with that, that wraps up my presentation. I'm open for questions.
That's a lot.
We work hard over at Southside.
Questions?
Well, you know, in a day like today, where y'all open your doors because of the heat or, you know, freezing nights, you're open, you know. The Southside Community Center has been the brick-and-mortar organization in our community that has delivered services to folks that are in desperate need. So, thank you for the work you do. Outstanding presentation, by the way.
Thank you.
I did not know that y'all are already kind of proactively, like, signing up the HEMs, getting the MOUs done, starting to work with all the other agencies in the community to get them on the HMIS, so everyone's coordinating, communicating. What this, this eight hundred thousand dollars, I, I call it the big ask. You know, if you ask, you know, anyone in our community, like, what are some of the pressing needs in San Marcos, homelessness is frequently mentioned. You can see it around town. We're having an increase in homelessness in our community and, and no better organization has been identified to handle this and, and provide services than Southside. So, thank you for stepping up to the plate, and we're going to help try to provide those resources and dollars to support y'all's efforts. And that's what this is, this, this big ask. So, thank you for stepping up and, and I think it's important. We start putting our money where our mouth is regarding this issue in our community.
Thank you so much for your time.
I have a question for staff.
Sure.
Oh, it's, I don't think, yeah, it's, it says on our agenda that we met on seven-eleven twenty-four. Did we meet on seven-eleven twenty-four for the homelessness committee? Okay, because we had talked, okay. Just wanted to make sure because I don't.
Yeah, I think something happened. You were wrong for that.
Okay. Yeah, no, I appreciate it, and y'all answered my questions earlier, so.
Thank you.
I too, I want to, just want to congratulate you on the presentation and an awesome job. And I think the big thing here, what this is getting to is, as we were talking about the city's resources, one city, one voice, we need that also with the homelessness and the partners and the landlords. And you guys are becoming that voice, and you're seeing it come to fruition. And I'm glad we can partner with you to do this and help you along on that process. And just great job of getting the framework in place to move the ball, to get the facilities in place, to coordinate all the efforts and the resources. That's going to make an impact in our community. So, thank you all for the work on that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And is there anything else? Then Ms. Trevino will set us up to vote.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, then we will. Thank you very much. We will back up to item twenty-two.
Okay, consider approval of ordinance twenty-two-four dash thirty-six on the first of two readings, approving the twenty-two-four annual service plan update for the Whisper Public Improvement District, authorizes city manager or her designated to execute said document on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve. Second.
Motion for Mr. Scott, seconded from Mr. Gleason, to approve. Do you, are you here for questions or, because we like do this every year, and I think, I think we've got it now in council. Do you have questions, thoughts? We're ready to vote.
All right, the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All right. On to item twenty-three.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty-two-four dash thirty-seven on the first of two readings, approving the twenty-two-four annual service plan update for the Whisper South Public Improvement District, authorizing city manager or her designated to execute said document on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve. Second.
Motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. Council, y'all have any questions?
No.
We've got people here who can help us, but we're going to vote now.
Ms. Carr. And the motion passes six to zero with one absent.
All righty, we will continue on with item twenty-four.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty-two-four dash thirty-eight on the first of two readings, approving the twenty-two-four annual service plan update for the Trace Public Improvement District, authorizes city manager or her designated to execute said document on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve. Second.
Motion for Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason, and we will vote in, that's, yeah, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero, one absent.
All righty.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Right, consider approval of ordinance twenty-two-four dash thirty-nine on the first and final reading, amending ordinance twenty-two-four dash thirty-five ordering a general election to be held on November fifth, twenty-twenty-four, for the purpose of electing a mayor, city council member for place five, a city council member for place six, by establishing early, early voting and election day polling places for this election, making provisions for conducting the election, providing for the approval of this ordinance as an emergency measure on only one reading, and providing an effective date.
Most to deny. No, just kidding. Most to approve.
I've got a motion to approve from, from Mr. Scott, seconded by, is that you, Mr. Gonzalez? All right. This was adding the polling places, and Ms. Trevino has handed out a copy, so we have that information. We'll vote.
Same motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Item twenty-seven.
All right. Consider approval of resolution twenty-two-four dash one fifty-six, approving the award of a construction contract to Aaron Concrete Contractors LLC for the East Oak Arena Springs Drive reconstruction project in the estimated amount of one million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and seventy-five cents, authorizes city manager or her designated to execute the contract on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve.
Motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by
Second.
Mr. Gleason. Are there questions? Mr. Condor is here. My question's already been answered on the message board.
Nope.
We'll vote.
Are y'all going to get mad at me? Can we do this over again?
Sure.
We're good. Ms. Carr, uh, Mr. Scott.
Guessing? Oh, just kidding.
Mr. Scott.
Twenty-eight.
Mr. Scott. Did you vote?
Oh, you, oh, you do it that way, yeah.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Item twenty-eight.
Consider approval of resolution twenty-two-four dash one fifty-seven R, approving a public transit system in our local agreement with the Capital Area Rural Transportation System, CART, for CARTs to provide public transit service and maintenance in the San Marcos urbanized area with funding to CARTs in the amount of two million, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, of which six hundred and nine thousand, fifty-nine dollars is to be paid by the city and the balance to be paid from federal and state sources, authorize city manager or designated to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Scott, to approve. Are y'all here for questions?
No.
Yes.
Okay. And if we don't have any, we could go home soon. I think CARTs is mid, but I'll vote for.
The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Item twenty-nine.
Consider approval of resolution twenty-two-four dash one fifty-eight R, approving a sub-recipient funding agreement with Texas State University, under which the city will pass through fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, section fifty-three zero seven, federal transit administration funds to Texas State in the amount of two million, five hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars on a reimbursement basis for the purchase of vehicles for the Bobcat Shuttle Service, authorize city manager or designated to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason. That was a motion to approve.
No discussion.
She's already set us up to vote. I'm pushing my button.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Item thirty.
Consider approval of resolution twenty-two-four dash one fifty-nine R, approving a sub-recipient funding agreement with Texas State University, under which the city will pass through the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, section fifty-three zero seven, federal transit administration funds to Texas State in the amount of three million, sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars on a reimbursement basis for the purchase of vehicles for the Bobcat Shuttle Service, authorize city manager or designated to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Most to approve. Second.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by Mr. Gleason, to approve. If you don't have any questions, you can go ahead and vote. You have a question, now's the time.
Motion passes six to zero with one absent.
And we are six to zero. And we're at, I, thank y'all so much for staying up late with us.
Yeah, we voted on those very quickly, but those agreements are very important, and they're going to be critical to future transportation around town. So, thank you all for working on that.
Absolutely, yeah. The, the time we spent just voting, that means that the presentation was in there, answered our questions, was good. They're lying, they're just tired.
Yeah, are we just tired?
Well, we know it's a good thing. Item thirty-one.
Consider approval of resolution twenty-two-four dash one sixty R, changing the composition of the Finance and Audit Committee and clarifying that the role of the committee includes audit processes and declare an effective date.
Most to deny.
Second. How late do y'all want to stay here? We can postpone it, we can talk about it later.
I just kind of want to get rid of the audit finance committee. I think it all should be open to the public.
I mean, valid. That you think of what?
I think everything should be open to the public.
What we see is exactly what gets presented to the public at the next meeting.
Sometimes, sometimes we decide not to have things brought to the council.
No, 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 this is the finance and audit where we pre-look at the audit stuff that comes and the finance reports and all of that stuff. Other things that we talk about is, wasn't the original function of this committee.
Yeah, I know I was on it, and that's why I said sometimes.
Yeah, you're right, I agree with you.
Yeah, well, sometimes we do that. Now, I know we look at just the audit, but there's other things that come up that I feel like we should just go right to council, that's why I said that, maybe we should just get rid of it.
I think it's important to keep it. I think, um.
Did, so, are we supposed to be talking about it? Do we second in, like, what's, uh? I didn't hear a second to deny, I'm waiting for a motion. Oh, no, I did.
There was, I thought you hit second.
I did second, but I just wanted to make sure that we're good to talk about it, okay?
I, I, you know, it's, it's nice for the mayor of the Pro Tem and deputy Pro Tem to get an update on the finances of the city.
That's not usually what we talk about, though.
Yes, it is.
We, we absolutely talk about that, that's why the meeting gets called. There's other things that get added to it at times.
There's a lot of other things.
Some of that other stuff, some of the audit stuff, I get, but it's important, too. But I think it's important for the Pro Tem and, and the deputy Pro Tem to be up to speed on what the finance situation is. And it kind of starts the process of informing the council of where we're at financially and, and those presentations. I know you see the, the only problem is you see the presentations twice in a short amount of time, but that's a good thing.
Hold on, Mr. Gary. What's on the table is not the existence of the Finance and Audit Committee.
That's correct.
What's on the table is to delete the position of Director of Public Safety and to say it's the Assistant City Managers.
That's correct.
Denying that change does not make this committee go away.
Um, I do have, I do have some questions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I've been on, I am on that committee, been on it for a second. I, I know it's like, we're making it, like, codified so that they, everybody there votes, except, and then we're deleting, like, what the Safety Director from it. But is that what happens? Like, I, I feel like sometimes people vote and sometimes people don't vote, like.
We will vote on something that it's going to come to council if it's like the credit card policy or something like that. But that comes to council. Sometimes we just spend time kind of hashing things out, and it takes a little less time here, but we certainly talk about it as long as we want to here.
I guess my point is, like, for conversations about, like, council Right. I guess my point is like for conversations about like council salary and spending and all that, I think that, uh, my recollection is when we do talk about it, like when we vote or like, are we going to take this or not? They leave that up to us three and they don't necessarily vote. And so it's like, why are we like putting it, like the rest of the folks, yeah. Yeah, they're like, y'all do whatever you want. Um, but like for the other stuff, I don't even think everybody says like yes or no. It's kind of, it's always been like unclear to me who has voting rights. And I know this is supposed to like clarify that, but it's like, is that, I guess what the ra- what's the rationale of making everybody be able to vote?
And we can bring this up on different time.
That's not changing, is it, Ms. Reyes?
No.
But we have had questions, cause we've had changes in staff and there's people in the room, that are always in the room, because we need them in the room, but they're not voting members. And I had that question, cause there's one that I was told that they're a voting member now, they're, and apparently they really weren't. Um, so I think making this done is clear. I was going to suggest that we actually put this in the code, cause you remember when I was looking for it in the code, couldn't find it, y'all, y'all having to dig through all these other resolutions. And I'm, I'm thinking, my suggestion was to actually put it in the code with all the other boards and commissions and all the other committees and stuff, um, that are at this level. So that we can find things easier.
Yeah, the only change we're bringing forward today is for the.
Remove my motion.
Are you okay with that, Ms. Garza?
That's fine, but I'm just want to know, what is, what is the change then?
It's just to remove the director of public safety position as a board member on the finance audit committee because we no longer have that position as a city.
But we haven't had that for a while though, right?
And we just haven't brought, we haven't changed this.
Changed it into city manager.
And it, and it says assistant city manager, so covered, cause we had two, now it's three.
I mean.
That's the change that's been brought forward.
Today.
Most to approve, second.
I'm fine with that change. I do think we need to revisit and make it so that there's clarity when we meet. Like who's supposed to vote and who's not. Um, I know it says it here, but maybe we should just make people vote when we call the roll. But I'm fine with it. Yes, let's go.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, and we, we pushed the city hall item, although I, I hope everybody comes ready to roll on that one next time. And now we're going to go to our next item. And if y'all recall, we do have an executive session item tonight. At least it's on our agenda. We'll figure out what we're going to do.
The city council will convene in executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, one, section five-five-one point zero seven-one, consultation with attorney, A, to receive legal advice regarding an offer of settlement from Walton, Texas LP relating to a request to be released from the city sewer, CCN, and related development agreement and mud consent agreement. B, to receive legal advice regarding the annexation and development of land in connection with Axis Logistics Smart Terminal Project. C, to receive legal advice regarding the officer-involved shooting incident in April, twenty twenty-four. Uh, two, section five-five-one point zero seven-one, deliberation regarding real property. A, to deliberate regarding the possible purchase or lease of land for the development of affordable workforce housing. B, to deliberate regarding the possible lease of property at three fifty Barnes Drive for relocation of the city's municipal court.
Most to convene.
Motion for Mr. Scott to convene into executive session, seconded from Mr. Gleason, and now we'll vote.
Yeah, I'm just saying that it's personally annoying to me that this is the last thing and it's so late because I already have trouble retaining information, especially at eleven thirty-seven PM. I mean, I'm going to do it. I just want everybody to know that I'm annoyed with it.
Mr. Gleason, Mr. Breer.
Your vote didn't take.
Then it's at eleven thirty-seven.
You know, if you push it too soon, it doesn't take.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, let's proceed to the city hall conference room. Turned from our executive session that we concluded at twelve thirty AM. We are at question and answer with the press and public. No one has signed up. No one is here. I will, there being no further business to, uh, have, we are adjourned at twelve thirty-one.